I'd like to call the Smithfield Town Council meeting to order Thursday, March 6, 6:00 PM. I'd like to start off with a prayer. We come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting and will help to engage in a meaningful discussion and allow us to be closer as a group in nature of the boards and the bonds of the community. So, to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the equality which stands one nation under the God, indivisible, with no limitations, justice for all.
Emergency evacuation and health notification. In the event that the town council chambers has to be evacuated, there are two exits. One to my right, stairwell leads down to the side of the building directly at the rear of the councils, another exit when you walk out that door. To your right is a stairwell leading out to the front of the building. Do not use the elevators in the event of emergency. Ladies' room and men's room, rear exit of the council chambers. To your right is the men's room. Up the stairs to the left is ladies'. Thank you, Chief. Number five, public hearing. I'd like to conduct a public hearing to consider and discuss the act upon the application of tax stabilization agreement with the Thomas Smithfield Organogenesis Holdings, Organogenesis, Inc., and D I V Technology Way LLC. I'll declare this public hearing open. Anybody who'd like to speak? Say your name and where you're from, please.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Jeremy Savage. I represent Organogenesis, Inc., the applicant. If it pleases the council, I'll give a brief overview of the application and be happy to take any questions. So, Organogenesis is a publicly traded regenerative medicine company focused on the development, manufacture, and commercialization of solutions for the advanced wound care and surgical and sports medicine markets. Organogenesis has signed a lease agreement for the facility at 100 Technology Way in Smithfield, which is approximately 100,000 square foot manufacturing facility that has been vacant for the past two years. And this lease has been signed subject to the execution of an acceptable tax stabilization agreement with the town of Smithfield, which is the purpose of the application, and that agreement is attached, that proposed agreement is attached to the application that was submitted. Over the next three years pursuant to the application, Organogenesis plans to renovate this facility into a world-class facility, complete with manufacturing, quality control, product testing, product development, and operations facilities and infrastructure. This renovation is estimated to cost approximately $97.5 million over the next three years and will take a currently vacant depreciating building and expand the tax base by turning it into a world-class biotechnology facility. In a recent story, The Valley Breeze noted that this application has received a positive recommendation from the Budget and Financial Review Board. The story goes on to highlight four key benefits noted by the board, which we think perfectly summarize the value proposition for Smithfield. First, the 100-plus jobs that the company is committed to hire for with an average salary of $110,000 per year in areas such as IT, shipping, quality, engineering, and operations. These jobs will contribute to the local economy and will create a highly compensated positions for which the residents of the town will receive preference. Second, as mentioned, the agreement will incentivize significant investment by Organogenesis in a property that has been vacant for the past two years and is projected to yield decreasing property taxes if it continues unoccupied. Third, the TSA will ensure a predictable revenue stream for the town as the project matures. And fourth, the projected increases in economic activity will bolster the town's commercial base and generate benefits for local businesses. One of these points requires further emphasis. This property is currently generating approximately $340,000 in annual property tax revenue, but $117,000 of this is associated with personal property that we believe is no longer located in the facility. So, for emphasis, absent a deal to bring a tenant to this building, it's reasonable to anticipate the $340,000 in annual taxes will decrease and perhaps significantly. On the other hand, this tax stabilization agreement, as negotiated and proposed in the application, provides for an average annual tax payment to the town of $807,000 per year over the term of the TSA. And even in year one, the town is insulated from what would otherwise be a significant decrease in the property tax revenue from the property. This is in addition to other immediate financial benefits to the town, such as the significant permit fees that would typically be due in connection with the development of this size. I do want to note one technical item before I pause for comments or feedback, questions, that in discussion with the town management, we have agreed to suggest to change the TSA that was attached to the application. This one change was made in response to Councilman Iannati's feedback at the January meeting, and the change would be to increase the term from 16 to 20 years and to replace the extension option with an early termination option effective May 31, 2041. So respectfully, I'd request that the council consider the agreement with this revision in their vote tonight and consider the application.
Any questions from the council?
If I may just ask a clarifying question. I just want to make sure, this TSA that we have with the redlining, is that the one that both, who is recommending this TSA? I just want to make sure I understand who's, where this one came from.
Zero original agreement plus recommended changes from the assessor and myself.
Okay, okay.
And, as Mrs. Savage just stated, the early termination provision.
Has been added, I see that. Okay, so, Attorney Savage, have you seen this, this new one with the redlining?
I have.
Okay. Besides this early termination option, is there any thoughts on the other language that was changed in this particular TSA?
Yeah, we are, with the exception of the early termination language, we're here requesting the council consider the TSA draft that was initially submitted with the January 15th application. So, in short, the changes, as suggested and just referenced by Attorney Galone, are not acceptable to the applicant.
All of the changes except the, okay, thank you.
That's correct, yeah.
Well, I noticed that some of the changes made by Solicitor Galone were in order to have the agreement comply with our tax stabilization ordinance. So how can we approve an agreement with language that would violate the tax stabilization ordinance if this agreement is being enacted pursuant to the tax stabilization ordinance by its terms?
Yeah, so respectfully, I would suggest that the authority to enact this agreement comes substantially from the enabling state legislation. I also don't believe that it is inconsistent with the terms of the general enabling ordinance to pass a specific piece of legislation to authorize this agreement.
So the town ordinance is not a real law?
No, absolutely, it's a real law. It just would not apply to this deal in those provisions where there was a conflict between the general and the specific ordinance.
In your opinion, does it sense?
Do you agree with that?
So as far as a specific versus the, as far as a specific versus the general, the, I think the major issue here, obviously, is the language related to the clawback provision, okay? And the ordinance that, as it was drafted, basically wanted to eliminate any reference to the clawback. Our ordinance, obviously, an essential part of our ordinance was that, was that clawback provision. And so right now, the way the clawback would work is if there was a material default in the terms of the ordinance. So a default can only occur under four instances in our ordinance. First instance would be if there was a change in use of the property from manufacturing to another use, which would probably, I haven't seen the lease that Organogenesis is considering, would probably be a violation of the lease as well if there was a change in use. If there was a non-payment of taxes during the term of the agreement, if there was a non-payment of a municipal assessment, or if there was a zoning or building violation. If any one of those four things happened, it'd be considered a material breach. However, with that being said, even with, even if we were considered a material breach under the terms of our ordinance, once notified of a potential breach of the ordinance, the applicant in this case would have a 60-day cure period to cure all of those potential violations. So the ordinance does address situations and tries to accommodate any applicant. So that provision relative to a clawback was an essential provision of the ordinance. How you get around it, obviously, is, you know, and whether there's a, the ordinance as proposed would be inconsistent with the proposal, the proposed ordinance will be inconsistent with the tax stabilization ordinance. However, they're trying to, basically, not doing work around it, but basically, what they're really trying to do is let you realize the, is an inequitable nature to it in the sense that, or inequitable nature in the sense that, as the savage has raised several points to me, that if there was a material default and you had 19 of the agreement, the way our clawback works, we'd still be responsible for repayment of the 19-year, the difference between the actual value and the stabilized value over the 19-year period prior. But the ordinance is, it is what it is.
So Anthony, if we were to accept what they propose, and it doesn't match our ordinance, is any legal ramifications to the town?
What's, you're acting in a, you know, you're basically acting in a manner inconsistent with the ordinance. So legal ramifications for somebody challenging it down the road, absolutely.
How would that, how would that go? What, what do you mean? Who would challenge it? Because to me, the only person that would have standing to do it would be the person who has the conflicting ordinance, unless that's not correct.
Probably any taxpayer could challenge it.
Any taxpayer can challenge it. Based on, based on what? Like, what do you mean?
We're giving a, you know, a tax benefit to a taxpayer, and it's affecting the overall tax base.
Councilwoman above us, would it be okay if I responded to that point? So respectfully, Solicitor Galone, I disagree with that conclusion. There's only one of two things that can happen when we pass this ordinance in my mind. It is either an amendment to the existing ordinance operating as amendment, or it's specific legislation, which happens all the time, is contemplated by Rhode Island general laws, that you can have both general and specific legislation, and that you can have, in fact, general and specific legislation that is inconsistent. In fact, the Rhode Island general laws, Chapter 43, Section 326, provides that wherever a general provision shall be in conflict with a special provision relating to the same or a similar subject, the two provisions shall be construed, if possible, so that effect may be given to both. And in those cases, if effect cannot be given to both, the special provision shall prevail and shall be construed as an exception to the general provision, which I believe is most likely the exact outcome here. Alternatively, if you construed this ordinance as a limited amendment to the general ordinance, it does not mean that it's ineffective or subject to challenge. It means that you have to comply with the provisions of the charter pertaining to an amendment of the ordinance, which we have. We've published, we've published notice, we voted on publishing notice, we're holding a public hearing. We've published more than seven days prior to the date of this public hearing, which is the requirement of the town charter, and we will, of course, wait the 30 days before the ordinance takes effect. So, in my opinion, respectfully, I would say that in either event, you could only determine one of those two legal theories to govern, and both yield a result where the ordinance is effective. However, and this is the critical point, if this is not passed by ordinance, and if it is not made clear that the provisions of this agreement, where they differ even slightly from the terms of the existing ordinance, without a doubt, if this is passed by resolution, those provisions of the agreement will be ineffective and subject to challenge.
So what you're saying is that if we don't have an ordinance and we pass it without the ordinance, we have a bigger problem?
Well, respectfully, we have a bigger problem.
Well, what are you talking about passing? I mean, you're talking about if we pass Solicitor's version or your version? Which, which version are you talking about?
Before we even get to that, right now, we're on the first item on the agenda, which is the actual application. They are related, I mean, obviously, I need to approve the application and to move on to the second item, which is the ordinance.
Yeah. Can we just go through, before we get into this, I just want to go through each individual change that is proposed, the redlined one, and just see where, just kind of understand where, who's where, if that's okay? Sorry, I know it's going to take a little bit. Okay, page one of 11, we add the year.
Excuse me, just one second, Councilwoman. So I don't actually have that redlined.
Sure, sure. I don't think you have the.
I don't have the redlines.
No.
Sorry, this, we just got this a few moments ago, so maybe it hasn't circulated. Sorry, Chief.
The one that's tax stabilization agreement.
Yeah, yeah, that's the one.
And Attorney Savage, I don't know if you need time to review this now, if you just, or we can do it together.
No, God only knows, I've read this semester.
Okay, page one, the year, no objection, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Page two, there's no change. Page three, based on what you said before, and correct me if I'm wrong, there's no objection to anything on page three, that's the terms. Okay. Page four, is there an objection to adding, I think that might just be a technical change with the C?
No, no objection.
Okay. Page five, adding the language "upon town council approval" to section nine. Some of these just seem like clerical, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, this is.
Your ordinance requires it.
Yeah, well, this is actually problematic from my perspective.
Okay, so this one you object to?
I object to this one.
Okay, we'll get into why later. Page six, any objections here?
Yes, so I would object to the change in section 10, the bottom of the first paragraph on that page.
Removing the language in section 14?
Yep.
Objection?
I'm objecting to that as well.
Anything in section 15?
Bear with me just one second. So the first two changes, no objection.
Okay.
The underline changes, but the strike of the balance of that, we would object to.
We'd object, okay. Continuing on to the next page, same thing?
Yep.
Okay. And then presumably, some of these kind of clerical changes on page, the bottom of page seven, eight, nine?
Yeah, the balance of the changes, we have no objection to.
Okay, and then regarding this?
The change schedule, I believe, was just a cleanup formatting.
Okay, no objection to the new schedule, then?
That's correct.
Okay, okay.
In that new schedule, Jeremy, you see that they broke out real property versus personal?
Yes.
Okay, so the only real issue that I'm seeing that we have is page five and page six, moving on to page seven. Is that fair to say?
Yes, five, six, seven, yes.
Okay, okay. I'm with everybody now. Sorry, just needed to go through that.
No, don't be.
Can you explain what, I'll just keep going unless anyone has questions. Can you explain what your objection is to section nine A, "upon council approval"?
Yes, so the fear here is that a future town council might not be, I don't want to say acting in good faith, I want to say supportive of this, of this deal, tax stabilization agreements generally, whatever the case may be, and may withhold that approval in order to assert leverage or exert leverage on the company. So that's our, that's our concern with that. I think that, to the contrary, the way it was drafted was intended to capture the limited situations in which the assignment could occur. And so, you know, we tried to be thoughtful in our negotiation drafting of that section as it, as it was, to ensure that the town was not going to have a situation where there was an assignment where the use wasn't continued in the property. And that's what the, that's what the unchanged version of nine subsection A says.
Repeat what you just said?
Essentially, prior to this change, nine, section nine, subsection A, said, "As long as the property continues to be used for the purpose for which the exemption was granted, the company can assign it."
Without, without request of the council is what you're saying?
Correct.
And Anthony, you're saying the statute, or I'm sorry, the ordinance requires the town council, if there's going to be an assignment?
That's what I just asked him.
I left my stat, my ordinance at home, I don't know why.
Twenty-two C.
It does, I can, I can.
It does require that?
It does say that.
Three twenty-one, twenty-two subsection C.
Shall be transferable upon town council approval.
So this is a situation in which you prefer the language, not say that, and it's also inconsistent with the current general ordinance, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Can I keep going? Okay, sorry. Following that same section 10 last sentence, in accord, it's what, everything that, I think, remains the same in payment of taxes, and it just says "in accordance with," and it cites the particular provision in the ordinance.
Yes.
Now, notwithstanding the language that you have in 14, would you object to that language being in there?
Yes, so the effect of this language is to effectuate three twenty-one, twenty-two, subsection B, which is the provision that says essentially, any agreement made under this provision, if the four conditions that Solicitor Galone outlined were to occur, any of them, any taxes, quote, exempted under the agreement, shall become immediately due and payable. So that, that is the objection.
And you're saying that it doesn't say that otherwise? It doesn't, it would say, it would mean that otherwise, no? Even if it didn't cite it, correct or no?
Well, no, because you, if I, if I could, the changes in section 10 and in section 14 and 15, in some ways, have to be read together.
I see, okay, all right.
Right, because the absence of that language is called out down below in section 15, the change in section 15, if you go like four, four lines down in that change.
Okay, so line 14, I think you kind of already explained this a little bit about the inconsistencies, that's, that is you, or that's your client rather, wanting to make sure if this is an ordinance, it governs versus the general ordinance, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I think I get that one. The strikes in section 15, can you explain the objection to that, please?
Sure, so I think that there's, there's really two issues at play here, and I think it's best if we split them apart, take them one at a time. So the first issue is actually the second to appear in 14 and 15, which is that the town charter says that where there's an amendment to an existing ordinance, the sections being amended need to be referred to explicitly. And moreover, it's clarifying that if there are any inconsistencies between the specific ordinance and the general ordinance, it's clarifying that the specific controls the general. The Rhode Island general law that I cited too earlier, you know, to be clear, pertains to the interpretation of state statute. So there's no corollary, although that's a general canon, generally accepted canon of statutory interpretation, it's in every first-year law school coursebook in the country. It's, this, this change is explicitly stating that if there's a conflict, it's resolved in favor of this agreement and the ordinance that codifies it. So that's, that's issue number one.
What do you, what do you think about intentionally creating conflicts? Do you see an ethical problem with that?
No, I respectfully don't see any ethical problem. I see, you know, this has been a very thoroughly vetted application, it's been publicized for, for two months. Certainly, members of the public have been invited to all of those proceedings. So I see no ethical, I, I just want to be very clear, ethically speaking, I don't think that this company has hid from what it's asking for in this deal. And what it's asking for is an agreement that it can rely upon for the next 20 years that's going to be enforceable.
No, what it's asking for is an agreement that violates our ordinance, that's what it's asking for, correct?
It's, it's really not a violation of the ordinance, the whole point of passing a bylaw ordinance is to create a situation where it's allowed.
Well, if it's not allowed by the ordinance, then it's a violation of the ordinance.
I guess I would respectfully ask, I think if you follow that logic, any ordinance you pass that makes any amendment or change to an existing ordinance would be disallowed.
We not, we didn't pass an order, we made amendments to our ordinance that you requested. We already made those amendments.
Yeah.
But if you want to, if you want to have an agreement, and this goes to the next item on the agenda, be an actual ordinance, then our, the ordinance that we have here is really a joke, it's a nullity. You may as well just throw it in the trash, because every single first company that wants a tax stabilization agreement is going to come in and want it to be an ordinance. So why, why do we even have an ordinance in the first place?
No, I think it's a fair question. I think the, I would offer that I actually, I don't want to say the norm, because I cannot, I cannot profess that I've surveyed every municipality in the state, but I will, I will tell you that I represent the city of Pawtucket in another capacity, and I've spent the last four years negotiating the package for development of the Tidewater Soccer Stadium. The ordinance enabling tax stabilizations in Pawtucket is two sentences long and effectively says they're authorized, subject to the input and discretion of the town council, the city council. So, so I don't, respectfully, although it's not my position to be here tonight critiquing in any way the ordinance here, I do think it's non-viable for large-scale commercial development in the sense that it is so prescriptive. So I would, I would offer that there's only two pathways if, if the town seeks to, seeks to catalyze this type of development, which would be, one, amend the ordinance and change it totally to be something more general like, like in Pawtucket. Or two, accept that the, the ordinance is serving a very important function right now, which is that it's, it's laying out very clear, prescriptive application processes, which have worked, I would say, very well in this instance. We've had a robust public process, there's been robust opportunities for discussion and negotiation between the company and town management, and all of that's played out in a way that, that I believe has distilled an agreement for, for the honorable members of the council to consider tonight, that's thoughtful and balanced and represents both what's needed to bring the company to the town, but also critically, the interests of the, of the citizens of Smithfield.
I think it sets a precedent that we don't want to set, just as Councilman Iannati said it, you know, this is already a deal. Of course, I personally welcome, I know everyone else does, we welcome you here, we want you here, but, I mean, this is already a deal, I mean, to go against the ordinance, and exactly what he said, everyone's going to want the same thing. Why do we have ordinances if they're not going to be followed? So I wouldn't be in favor of that, and I don't think people would be in favor of that either.
See, Councilman, I disagree a little bit on that, because to me, like, when this, this tax stabilization ordinance is pretty new for Smithfield, right? It came 2022, I want to say.
It's been amended four times in three years.
Right, and I think that's, goes to show that this is a kind of a learning curve, it's ever-changing. Never before in my Never before in my, to my recollection, has Smithfield had a business such as this, with such a high caliber business, come in and ask for a tax stabilization. Typically, the investments are not upwards of $100 million. Actually, never has it been upwards of that much money. So to me, this experience that we have, kind of on a, that we're having right now, kind of on like a greater scale, is showing us the problems that we might have with our current existing ordinance. And having to, I'm not saying we amend the existing ordinance today, but I think it's worth looking into, if we have businesses that want to invest a lot of money in their prohibited, you know, the ordinance is so specific, it's prohibitive to them, or it turns them off from coming into Smithfield, and they prefer to go to towns like Pawtucket or whatever. That's the whole point of the ordinance in the first place, is to draw businesses here to invest into the town. So if it's, it's counterintuitive to have this specific ordinance, just on the principle of having the language that we have, you know, and...
Well, I think the purpose of the ordinance is to draw businesses to the town, but it's also to protect the taxpayers.
Exactly.
You know, we can't, we don't want to hand these things out just to anybody all the time, and, because, you know, we have businesses that are here, that, you know, they're paying their taxes, and, you know, this is a big benefit to companies coming here as well. This is a very large, this is over $5 million tax benefit to Organogenesis. But nevertheless, you know, I think for the reasons stated by the Budget and Financial Review Board, which include the creation of over 100 jobs, the investment of the $97 million in a vacant property, I think the benefits of this agreement to the town are obvious and substantial, substantial benefits to the town. I think we should approve the agreement, but I think, I don't think we should be approving an agreement against the recommendation, you know, I think we should approve the agreement. I think the guts of the agreement are, is basically the numbers, the amount of the taxes every year. I think the language in the agreement, I think we have to follow the recommendation of the town solicitor, and make sure the language comports with our ordinance. I think that's our duty, I think that we swore an oath to that. I mean, how can we approve language that doesn't comply with the ordinance? And I know that, you know, we want to, that the applicant wants us to pass a new ordinance in, by making the agreement itself an ordinance, I just don't think that makes any sense.
Do we want to approve this agreement based on what improvements an ordinance, you know, the ordinance could be, or what it is? I mean, we're not in the future, so we need to sort of go by what it is right now.
I think creating a separate ordinance in a very specific situation makes sense. I really do. I think, I think adding to or supplementing an already existing ordinance makes sense when you have specific circumstances. I mean, every statute I've ever read, every ordinance I ever read, has exceptions to it, like every single one. You know, there's always...
But aren't they in the ordinance?
Sorry?
Aren't the exceptions in the ordinance itself?
Right, and that's what I'm saying, I think our ordinance as a concept has issues, that we have businesses coming into town that don't feel like that's something that's viable for them. You know, we have, you look at tax stabilization ordinances, I looked them up from other cities, every single one has a different version. Smithfield is not unique in that way, like, every single city and town have different versions. Some cities and towns, and I mentioned this before, have provisions depending on the level of investment. So something to, at this level, this caliber, would, I don't know, get certain benefits or have certain, you know, whatever the word is, you know, have certain rules that they have to follow versus an investment of significantly less money. So I just think to have, I don't know, I just think in that sense...
Yeah, I think you're right about that, and I think that we should amend our ordinance at some point to have tiers of investment and benefits going along with the amount of the investment. In fact, I, you know, I've been looking at that, I've looked at other towns, and they have that, and I like that, and I think, you know, at some point...
It makes sense.
...be proposing something like that, that we can all agree to. But here we are, we're here now, in the present, and in the present, we have an ordinance, and we're either going to follow the ordinance or we're not. I mean, that's basically what we're faced with, you know. I mean, this ordinance was approved, you know, several, a few years ago, but it is the law here in Smithfield right now. And I think it creates a real conflict to pass an agreement as an ordinance that conflicts with, you know, the other ordinance, that, the real ordinance, you know, whatever you want.
So in essence, the only issue here that they're objecting to is the provisions relating to the clawback provisions of the ordinance. That's what appears.
That's the elephant in the room.
You know, we put in, we put in an escape valve there, after 15 years, you can walk away with no penalties at all.
The question is reality from a financial standpoint.
Mm-hmm.
Again, there's four, the clawback only comes in if there's a material breach. Under the ordinance, there's only a material breach under four circumstances. If there's a change in use, so if they went from manufacturing to something else, which would probably be a violation of their terms and conditions of their lease anyway, so they're not, probably outside, they're not going to do that. Number two, failure to pay taxes. Number three, failure to pay, failure to pay any uninsupposable assessments. And number four would be if there were a building or zoning violation. Now, with respect to all of those issues, you also have a 60-day sure period. So the town is going out of their way to say, "Look, even if you're in default, we're going to try and, try and help you by making it, making it work, we're giving you 60 days to do it, and if you didn't do it, you could also ask the town, once during the term of the agreement, for a, like a pass on any potential violation." So there were steps along the way. So from a practical standpoint, what's the reality of the clawback? I understand the legal position, obviously you represent your client. From a practical standpoint, what's the reality of this clawback even coming into play over here?
Could I just clarify one thing, Councilwoman Bobis? So I just want to be very clear on the two issues, because there is absolutely a business disagreement, a commercial disagreement about the clawback or recapture provision of that subsection B. That's not, that is not the only reason why we feel it's critical to pass this by ordinance as opposed to by resolution. So I just want to be totally clear that we have to solve, we have to solve both. We have to solve the ordinance...
Correct, correct. Well, we're going to get to the ordinance...
I can't wait.
Next.
What do you say about, you said that there are two, if we have two conflicting provisions...
The issue is this, is that specific normally governs, overrules the general. However, it doesn't overrule the general if there's a conflict between the, if the specific basically is, in terms of the specific ordinance, might be repugnant to the general ordinance. So over here, this clawback provision was, when this whole tax stabilization agreement was negotiated, not disagreement, but the original tax stabilization ordinance was vetted, and we had our public hearings, that issue came up over and over and over again. So it's, you know, the public and members of the Financial Budget Review Board, everybody weighed in on it, and they said, "Listen," and I don't even think that, if my memory serves me right, I don't even think that was in the original version of the draft ordinance, it came in after as a result of public deliberation, but they also wanted to attract businesses in the way they, they didn't want to make the terms and conditions so onerous that no business would, you know, be interested in Smithfield, and that's why they built in those 60-day windows to cure any prospective default, as well as, there is a, I think there is a provision in there, if there is a default, you have...
Two, three, and four.
Yeah, you have 60 days, but then there's also, you may petition the town council to maintain the tax agreement one time, at one time during the term of the agreement as a result of any non-payment or late payment. And it's the same with respect to all of the violations. So there's like, there's like two or three levels to protect any prospective applicant here, and that's the reason why this is even coming into play.
I understand, and like I said, I'm trying to be respectful of the agenda, it's just very hard to talk about recapture without also...
Right.
...talking about the ordinance. So I would say, but in an attempt to do so respectfully, I would just emphasize, start by emphasizing that I don't believe that these termination provisions, in terms of the conditions that you've outlined, that's not the objection. What the objection of the company is, is that they're going to come in in the next three years, they're going to spend $95 million building this facility. And the reason tax stabilization exists, why that's become a common mechanism to spur development, is that in those early years, you've got a short-term financing mechanism during your construction period, you've got a non-productive facility that's generating no revenue, no business, or minimal revenue and business, your operations aren't stabilized, all of these things cost the company a great deal of money in the early years of that agreement. And that's why you phase in over time, because you tie those two things together. But respectfully, it's the, it is, in my view, it is the company and solely the company that is taking, well, it's the company and the state, to be fair, because the state's also committed significant cash incentives to this, to this project. Not tax abatement, but, but actual cash incentives, tax credit incentives. It's specifically those two entities that are taking this risk in the early years. The position of recapture says to me, we're concerned, the town is concerned, about a situation where it is foregoing revenue, that it would otherwise be earning, and so we want to make sure that if we're foregoing that revenue, if we don't get the benefit of our bargain, then, you know, we're going to, we're going to be made whole. That is a, that is, to me, a legitimate goal. However, I don't think it applies to these facts, because there's a vacant building with depreciating real property that's projected to have decreasing taxes immediately, potentially, if this deal, if this deal doesn't happen. So in fact, on date one, year one, the town's financial position has improved, and by the time that stabilization occurs, the town has effectively guaranteed itself a, I'm going to say a material, materially if not exponentially increased revenue stream from this facility that right now is trending the wrong direction. That's before you get to any of the incidental benefits, the indirect economic benefits, the effect of having hiring priority given, you know, for those 100 jobs in the town of Smithfield, you know, every one of those employees, you know, buys a home, and, you know, shops at the local market, and eats at the local restaurants. All of that is economic benefit to the town, but the risk is the company's risk. And so I guess what I would say, the way I would frame this, is that unlike a situation where you might have a current highly productive asset that's getting its taxes abated, this is a situation where the benefit starts on day one, the risk has shifted almost entirely to the company and to the state, and in year one, the town of Smithfield realizes a significant material, very large, depending, you know, however you want to characterize it, economic benefit, not just from the, from the tax increase and tax revenue stream, but also from things like permit fees and the rest.
So am I hearing you correctly in saying that in the case of a material breach, in your client or your position is that no money will be owed regardless of when that material breaches?
That's correct.
Okay.
I think, I'm sorry, could I just correct that statement slightly? So to be clear, if there was a breach error, there's an asset that's now had $100 million invested in it that has no tax stabilization. So the asset would then be assessed at 100% of market value. My client, and candidly, if my client's committed any of these four breaches, it has, it has much larger problems than the TSA. So my client would not be due any extra payments, assuming it had left, but the owner of the facility and any subsequent occupant would not have the benefit of that tax stabilization agreement at that point. Which is really important, actually, Councilwoman Bobis, because I believe you raised the point previously, or if not you, I apologize, about the assignment of the TSA. If, you can't assign a terminated agreement in default. So, you know, that's, that's a protection, is it's not like there can be a passing of the, of the baton here, if there is a termination. So the termination, in other words, has real teeth, it's just not in the form of a payment of taxes for past years measured against what the taxes would be if, for some reason, the company came to the town and agreed to come without the benefit of a TSA.
Okay. What I think, I appreciate both sides in this, in the sense, the clawback as written is a little bit prohibitive in the sense, if it's 19 years and a half, I get, if there was a breach at 19 years and 364 days, the clawback as written is an issue. But if there's a material breach at three years, I don't see an issue. You know what I'm saying? So I think there needs to be some middle ground from your client, and I can only, I can't speak for everybody on the town council, I can speak for myself, that it might make things, it would make things easier on my end, instead of saying, "No matter what, if we breach the contract, too bad, so sad, you don't get your money," to the taxpayers, that's not right, you know? So if there was some middle ground on, on the part of your client, which I don't know if you can speak to that today or not, but I think that's where I'm struggling with, is you can just breach the contract whenever you want, why enter into a contract? What's the point? Because the only person getting, the only person that ends up with no benefit is our taxpayers if they breach the contract. Because you just said, your client would have much bigger problems anyway, they don't have any money anyway, if that, if that was the case. So it just puts our taxpayers at risk and literally nobody else.
Could I, Jeremy, before you speak, gee...
Mr. President, I could ask a question. What I'm going to ask you, Jeremy, is, is there any other thought between you and your client of what you can do for the town to offset potentially some of the future loss? But before you answer, I know we've spent a lot of hours going back and forth and a lot of time on this, and what I do want to mention, because this is a behind-the-scenes thing, I've been working very closely with Mr. Jim Bennett from Rhode Island Commerce, we almost talk weekly now, I believe, and, so Rhode Island Commerce is very interested in expanding that area, that general area, as well as where Organogenesis is going. And in that vein, they are in support of helping us promote that area, and with that, they've already obligated to assist us with infrastructure and technology up there in the tune of just under $400,000, because, and what kind of stimulated the conversation was the fact that Organogenesis was coming in, and as we had a further conversation with Commerce, I said, "I'd love to see a biotech park up there, be perfect with the university and businesses like this coming in." And I know there's, you know, Jim and his organization, and I spoke to Liz Tanner the other day, actually, as well, when I saw at the governor's conference, are very supportive of moving forward and helping us out with this. So I just want to throw that in there because of the importance of what's going on up there, and the fact that they've already made commitments to us and working with us to help us fund some of the things we need to make that area more attractive. But I guess, Jeremy, going back to my question, is that, is there anything else your company, or you, the company obviously you're representing, has considered to maybe offset? Because I know just the construction fees along, if you go through with this project, we're going to get $901,000 just from your project, as any project has to have billing fees and fire code and plant, plan review fees, so, and so that doesn't change regardless of who's coming in. So obviously, that, the benefit to the town, but I was just curious if there was any other things that you maybe proposed to us in consideration to help offset the potential fear of, "What if you're not there?"
Sure. So, thank you, Bob. The, to respond to a few things you just said, I mean, and also dovetail that with Councilwoman Bobis's comments and questions, so... I want to, and I'm not familiar with how you calculate your permit fees and all of that, that's beyond the scope of my specialty.
It's state called...
I know it's, I know it's formulaic, but I can't, I can't, I trust you. You know, what you just described, to use your numbers, is somewhere 1.3 to 1.4 million dollars in immediate benefit to the town, cash benefit to the town, plus the 100 delta between those tangible property taxes and the baseline taxes under the TSA. So before you get to any acceleration, which happens starting in year four after the first three-year construction period, you've effectively got $500,000 a year in incremental benefit to the town, if there were to be a termination in the first three years, which again, I think is unlikely. But I want to, but I want to be clear... But I want to, but I want to be clear about the request, because I think it is very easy to look at that request and say, how reasonable is this? We're, we're asking for just a little bit of a give, it's not a big deal, they're not going to leave anyway. It is so hard in this economic climate, speaking as a Rhode Islander for a second, to get businesses like this to relocate to the state. It's so hard that in, in most other municipalities with a project like this, the conversation is not about the tax stabilization agreement, it's about the direct cash incentives the town is putting into the deal to subsidize the development. There's another very large recent one that's had a lot of press in the state, where, you know, there were discussions of 40, 50, 60 million dollars in to help build the building, plus the tax stabilization agreement. And the reason for that is because the amount of risk in this environment with a construction project like this, you know, the expense of these projects has, has doubled in the last five years in terms of construction cost. So, the fact that, that we've got a private publicly traded entity coming to the state and saying, we're going to spend the money, we don't need any extra help, other than the, than the, the tax credits that we're, we're negotiating with Commerce, which I don't want to minimize, we're just looking for some help stabilizing our cash flow as we stand this business up, is, in my mind, a very reasonable and actually, in terms of the market, a pretty.
Attorney Savage, the tax flow, it is stabilized, that's the whole point of this. It's only not stabilized if you breach. It is stabilized, like you have that benefit.
So, so the, the second point I just wanted to make about that, because you said, what if they leave? They're not the, the building owner in this instance. So, there's an element, you know, it's broken out in the, in the sheet, as Celestica long pointed out, there's a break between the tangible and the, and the real property taxes. You still have a real property tax owner, taxpayer, other than our client, that owns that building, that's paying tax, and it's paying tax based on an improved valuation.
The problem you have with this building, it's been vacant for two years.
Yeah.
And it's a unique building. I mean, unless you're a specific user, like in organogenesis, you're not, you're not, you're not going there.
So, wait, let me, it's not to interrupt you, I don't want to go off your point, but if, if organogenesis breaches and then goes bankrupt, knock on wood, right, we, that's obviously not something we want to happen. But if that does happen, is the leaseholder still on the hook for the taxes?
So, so, so there's two different pieces of this agreement, you have real property versus tangible property. Organogenesis is the tenant, if making leasehold improvements to the property. If they go out of business, obviously, the town, you're not going to be able to, you're, you're going to lose that, that taxable value associated with the leasehold improvements, because over time, those leasehold improvements are going to be depreciated, you know, you install them in year one, and then over time, over like a 10 or 20-year period, they depreciate them every year, they finally return with the assessor stating what the value is, and the assessor verifies that, that value. So, our, we'd be, the owner of the real property, on the other hand, obviously still owns the real property. If they were ever in default, and, you know, didn't pay their real property taxes, we have the ability to.
I see what you're saying.
We, we can not only lean the property, sell it at tax sale.
I see.
Can I just clarify that? Any permanent changes to the building will actually stay in the real estate side, and not to the tangible side will change. And just for clarification, right now, even with organogenesis going in there, the property owner is still responsible for the real estate taxes.
I see.
So, there's always that responsibility that stays on the property owner.
Okay.
So, the practical risk of the breach and clawback would really be with, really be with the landlord, because the lien would go on the, the real estate. I mean, that's where the, the value would be. I mean, if, if organogenesis went bankrupt, they'd be gone, I mean, there'd probably be nothing, nothing really to collect anyway. So, the risk would be with the landlord on the real estate.
Hang, hang on for one second, Mr. Bennett, did you want to talk to Mr. Savage? So, we'll take a five-minute recess.
Standing up a little closer, all rise. All rise for President Tassoni.
All of our businesses, and all their tangible taxes, they're going out of business so many times, we have to run away, we have to step away, because we don't have the patches, you know what I mean? So, you get values in the real estate, that's it, so you're taking a risk. But it is, we want somebody to know best.
You have to be done on the record so they can, yeah, be a part.
No, no. This, this building, we've ever regretted.
Oh, why?
Because of the worries, two years, three years, you know? The way, the way of structure. Not to talk about this. Look at my left ear. It's 50, 60, 70, 80, 90, 100, 110, 120, 130, 140, 150, 160, 170, 180, 190, 200, 210, 220, 230, 240, 250, 260, 270, 280, 290, 300, 310, 320, 330, 340, 350, 360, 370, 380, 390, 400, 410, 420, 430, 440, 450, 460, 470, 480, 490, 500, 510, 520, 530, 540, 550, 560, 570, 580, 590, 600, 610, 620, 630, 640, 650, 660, 670, 680, 690, 700, 710, 720, 730, 740, 750, 760, 770, 780, 790, 800, 810, 820, 830, 840, 850, 860, 870, 880, 890, 900, 910, 920, 930, 940, 950, 960, 970, 980, 990, 1000.
I'm of the opinion it's a disaster, it's.
The tax, because you don't.
I don't need this, at least not for the market, it's, it's, it's literally, all of them are, even though they're consistent.
I don't have my tax, because it doesn't.
No, it does. Well, that's what I was just saying, from this experience, I'm learning that we need a little bit of edits, but that's, that's what happens when you have a new office, you got to edit, that's fine, yeah, like, we've never had this business, now we have problems, okay, it's a problem. For these people to know how to benefit, because we don't re-improve. Not intentionally, it's just, you couldn't have predicted, yeah. Until you do it, exactly.
Do you want to? Just whenever we.
I got, I don't want to.
You want me to? Everybody, they had it.
That's all right, it's, 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 and that's, I, I, I.
Too bad.
I know.
Yeah, yeah.
Just make it happen. All right, I'm going to.
We don't stop to give back, but we have been for ten minutes, we have been for ten minutes.
Yeah.
You put, you put, fall, fall, say, I'm not a candidate.
Yeah.
Yeah. With some of those kind of things.
Yeah, no. So.
Basically, when I say, we, 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 so Jim, Smalls is a hottie guy, so him and Howard were tight at the State House, when Jeremy was the speaker.
But right now, why don't we let members of the public speak if they're ahead of the, you know, then he, he spent probably a bit, I don't know, it's 10 or 12 years now. Because he was a crab, stupid. I scooped him. When he comes back, he had some, some, some problems, doing the same thing, so then they scooped him. He's making more. Yeah, which I want to see, that would be quick. You get another, all you need is one more, and it just swirls itself.
Yeah, yeah. What do you want? Yeah. So, we do that, yeah, again.
No, no.
Five years, a 10, 70?
Yeah, I sort of, I don't, I don't have, that's where they're missing.
Yeah, right. Ten, ten.
I make it, that's a way of getting around it.
Five years at 10, 70?
Yeah, I sort of, I don't, I don't have, that's where they're missing.
Yeah, right. Not that idea, 10.
Yeah.
And then it complies with.
Just, you just had a good idea, good idea. Of course.
Don't look so surprised. He said, move the escape clause up to 10 years, I don't know, after 10 years, so you reduce their liability by another five years. By one, five. Isn't it, hey? They have money, they have, I was talking, I know. It doesn't matter, you can't buy us out.
No, 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 no.
We have to comply with.
No, in order to comply with.
What they were going to do, too, is they, they try and, try and do it, do a work, I should say, consistently, in order to capture. They're concerned about providing, that's what you're just telling, exactly what you said, you know, because you're, you get to year 20, you put all this money in, and now if you default, what you're never going to have. The practical effects of defaults.
I think your argument, this, right, I'm pointing there.
Let them, look, and then, and then, you can make your, you make your suggestion.
I'll make my suggestion.
Yeah.
Yes.
Whatever, whatever. Well, let them, do, you think they're going to come back, so.
Okay.
Yeah, but even if they do, maybe we can get what we can, well. Well, we, we may not even have that, have your suggestion. Well, if we get some recapture, listen, if we get, think about it, if we get some recapture, we'll give them the escape clause, and we'll, we'll comply with the orders. All right? Some recapture. Does some recapture, and then we.
Well, it does if you lessen the, lessen the.
I talked for a while.
Yeah, yeah.
Get back.
Dirty, that's, don't say a bad word over there, oops.
Wait a second, who's older?
Love the question.
Who's older?
They're in the conference room, conference room, over there, that door there.
All right, Michelle, that's right.
She's going to be here after.
All right.
Yeah. I know we open, just shouldn't.
Wait.
You have, I have you both being, you do? Like, two or four weeks.
How old are you, wait? How old?
Pretty, 27, 28.
I'm 56.
I will, you know, say like.
Dirty. We're meeting with Samantha Curran. Audio, and you know where it's, you're talking about the whole budget process.
I see somebody jump over here.
Go up. It's all good, I'm trying to, basically, I. I don't know her, I don't know her. She's very smart, yeah.
That's good.
Right, I just feel like.
Those are three hours.
Yeah.
Well, once you clear this up, the second part will be easier, because you're either going to do it in an ordinance, or you're not.
Hunter Biden is in millions and that is moving. He asked a suggestion towards the.
It's probably got a, it's got a buried somewhere.
Like, how do you?
If I was, if I was at DOJ, I'd be trying to find it.
Yeah, right. I love Tracy.
I would all.
That's awesome.
Like, what, I would love that job.
Trump, Trump has a stock, he's a politician, and terrorists won't be, terrorists not the next, the markets get stopped, markets will kill, she's, stop it, stop it, stop it, it's, you're going to bring the cost, you're going to have it in like 20%, 30%.
Well, this whole thing was negotiated in a vacuum. You never had a, a concrete, we tried to do as best we could at the time. It works.
Yeah, it's okay, yeah.
Everybody's safe, of course, yeah. Right, right, right. How do you piece it together?
I think it's art.
Got the five-year line up.
It doesn't get a lot of.
It does, yeah, you have to have more legislative. I think we have to be a little careful that we're not picking winners and losers either, so it's kind of, it's a fine line. But I like the tiers idea, yeah, so. I'll send some, a proposal, I have to. I didn't want to do that before this, because it would mix everything up too much, and, it was just, yeah, yeah. I, I had the same thought, yeah.
Yeah, we, we should just have a boilerplate from now on.
Yeah.
Make up a boilerplate that matches this, that you, this is the, this is the application.
Absolutely, absolutely.
This, here you go. You might do something.
Yeah.
The thing you said to me.
Yeah.
Guys, ready?
While everybody's back?
Yeah. We're going back on the record. Jeremy, can you just lift the, the mic up a little bit?
Sure, is that better?
There you go, good, thank you.
Mr. President, I, I just, and I realize this isn't my prerogative, but, but I had two thoughts in, in cognizance of the time. I know that there's members of the public, and I've occupied this lectern for, for quite a.
It's okay, wait, until 10 o'clock.
All right. My second thought was a request, which is, it would make, I think it would make this conversation more productive if we could take the agenda out of order, and if the council could vote on the ordinance. Because without, without resolution of that formulaic issue, there's really no commercial discussion to be had, but if we can resolve that, then, then I can go to my client and, and.
I'm going to defer to the solicitor on this.
You have the prerogative to move items out of, out of order. However, you know, with this agenda item, my only concern is, you're going to move to adopt an ordinance, and we haven't agreed to the terms of the agreement.
Well, can you vote subject to?
That's what I was about to ask, could, we, we could vote subject to an assigned agreement, just like we do subject to with the licenses and stuff, I think. We could do, I would feel comfortable doing subject to an agreement, because obviously we don't want to make an ordinance if we don't know what it says. But I, I would feel subject to an, an agreement, and a vote by the town council. I, it would have to be a vote, right, on the agreement?
On the, on the agreement.
On the agreement, so I would feel comfortable subject to an agreement, voted on.
How do we adopt an ordinance that we don't, we don't even know what's in it?
I understand, I think, I get it, but I, I understand.
Then we figure out what's in it, let, you know, we shouldn't be doing that, I mean, that's just bad practice, so.
Just one further thought is that per the charter, the ordinance would not become effective until the 30th day. Uh, just one further thought is that per the charter, the ordinance would not become effective until the thirtieth day. So, there's no world in which we live tonight with an effective ordinance.
No, we're voting for something, we don't know what's in it.
I, I understand.
It's just, it's not, it's not good practice. Is that all you had to, because I, I had a, um, an idea that, you know, might, might make this more acceptable, you know?
It's your chamber, it's not my chamber.
Would it, uh, make a difference if the escape clause was at the ten-year mark instead of the fifteen? Would that help you out?
No, because, because the, the purpose of the, it's actually sixteen, and it's, it's meant to, uh, align with, uh, uh, the initial term of the lease agreement. So, they're obligated, I mean, that's a, that's a, um, I, I haven't seen the lease, I wasn't a part of the lease, but, but by my calculation, that's a, that's a nine-figure lease agreement. So, they're.
So you're stuck in the lease no matter what?
Yeah, they're not, they're not leaving before year sixteen unless someone drags them out of here.
Uh, Jeremy, I guess I should, one question?
Sure.
Um, I know you asked to go out of order. Just correct me if I'm wrong, but I think your concern is whether it's gonna become an ordinance or not, regardless of what it is. Is that the direction you're going in?
E- essentially, where I'm coming from is, I've had a conversation with my client in the recess, and, um, I have more authority than I had before the resource, recess, but not if there's multiple outstanding issues. So I have authority vis a vis the, the, the recapture to make a suggestion. But I don't have authority to do that if there's other open issues. So that's essentially why I was suggesting taking it out of order, because if we resolve that, then maybe there's a path to resolution on the, on the recapture.
I just want to make sure I, we're all on the same page about, and correct me if I'm wrong in saying this. If, if the town council does not vote for whatever agreement is in place to become an ordinance, there's no negotiations to be had regarding the actual substance of the agreement.
Correct.
Okay.
Ja- Jeremy, I think it's the consensus of council to just keep on going, and we'll take up the second one at the appropriate time.
Okay. Well, I, 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 I feel I've said my, um, said my piece, um, but I'm happy to take additional questions or, uh, if there are any other thoughts.
Any other questions for the council? Okay.
Members of the public?
Members of the public?
Good evening, Council. My name is Anthony Cherry, I'm the Assistant Executive Director at, at Builder Island with the trade, uh, the, the labor management firm that is comprised of, uh, the construction management, uh, firms, as well as the seventeen building trades that accompany, uh, the, the, uh, the building trades here. We are here in support of this, of the proposed TSA, uh, between the town of, uh, uh, the proposed TSA, excuse me. The building trades in, or, 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 as it says, have a partnership to ensure that the local tradesmen and women are utilized on this project. By committing to, by committing to developing this project all union, this partnership will produce good-paying union construction jobs. Many of these jobs created will likely employ Smithfield residents, as Rhode Island Building Trades has over five hundred families that call Smithfield home. I appreciate you all allowing me this opportunity to come forward. I did provide a written testimony from, from myself, as well as, uh, as the council president, as, as well as the, uh, building trades president, Mr. Sabatoni as well. Um, I'm here to answer any questions, uh, and I respectfully urge the passage of this TSA.
Can you, can you tell us which agreement you're in favor of?
That's a little bit above my pay grade on this one. We, we are, we are, we are here in support of the project as itself.
Thank you.
And that, uh, a TSA, if a TSA helps this project to get off the ground, we are in favor of that TSA. We have advocated for a lot of these TSAs, um, in Providence that are similar to this agreement.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but the crux are, are above my pay grade in this one.
I gotcha, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. Any others?
Hello, Council, my name is Ben Dodge, I'm a resident right here in town off of Swan Road. Uh, wanted to talk to everybody tonight and really encourage you to consider, uh, approve and really welcome Organogenesis to Smithfield. I've worked in this biotech business for over twenty-five years. Uh, I have seen, um, other cities and towns in Massachusetts just go to the moon on the coattails of biotech. Uh, and I had, you know, several things to, to mention tonight, all of which Jeremy has mentioned and probably articulated them a little bit better than I could. Uh, but, uh, what I wanted to say was, you know, in addition to what Jeremy was saying, uh, the, the, having Organogenesis in here, will really buck the trend of what we have seen in terms of tenants not staying there very long. One of the main reasons is because they have FDA-approved products. None of the other folks have had that in there, and that really creates a stable organization, um, that will go long-term. And, uh, I also encourage the council to really consider this much bigger than just, uh, you know, a, a tenant filling a, a current vacant building. It's really the opportunity for Smithfield to have, uh, an anchor business that would attract a lot of surrounding businesses to support it, um, that are all of that same caliber. Really good-paying jobs, these are the, the types of folks that you want coming into your town. These types of, of opportunities, and, and I call it an opportunity, uh, because that's really what I think it is. Uh, they don't come along very often, right? And, uh, they, there are a lot of folks, I'm sure, um, trying to get to Organogenesis to come to their town, right? So they don't want to wait around forever. Uh, so it would be really nice if we have to, you know, amend, uh, an ordinance or do whatever we have to do, uh, to get them here, to get it done quickly, uh, and really welcome them here, because you see what's happening at the, the state level with, um, your Rhode Island Bio and the Life Science Hub, and Brown University just broke ground on this, uh, state-of-the-art, world-class life science building in downtown. And, uh, you, you think of the possibilities of collaborations with the other schools and, and even, you know, the high schools and, 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 uh, universities here in town. Um, I think it is a tremendous opportunity for the town. Uh, get a long-term tenant in here that, uh, is, is a billion-dollar company, um, with multiple FDA-approved products, uh, that's, uh, you're willing to come in and we could build a whole biotech hub around them. So I encourage you all to, to really consider that, um, and act swiftly to, to get this approved and, and really welcome Organogenesis to our town. Any questions that I might be able to, uh, help with?
Well, I think we, uh, we do welcome them, and, um, I think we have acted quickly. Um, we've, um, made our processes go a lot longer than they usually do. In fact, the town council president scheduled, um, this special meeting just for this, which would ordinarily, you know, be held probably, if it was our regular meeting, would have been held down the road. So I, I think we've, um, we've tried to accommodate, um, uh, this company coming here, because we're all excited about them coming here as, as best, as best as we can.
As we should be, Councilman, and, and, uh, you know, I think I was here about two months ago when we were, uh, uh, talking with them, and, and, you know, my hopes was that we would just, you know, do whatever we could to, to welcome them in, because I truly think this is an opportunity for the town, you know, not just to fill a vacant, uh, uh, building that we have here, uh, but to have an anchor that we can build an entire, uh, biotech community around. Supporting businesses that come in when they know there's somebody like that, uh, here, uh, they're all tremendous. And they all, you know, they, they hire, uh, very, very high-caliber folks. Um, you know, they, they, they have a lot of revenues, they pay a lot of taxes. Uh, all of these things that, that we want here in town, you know, this is an opportunity for us to, to really get started on it. Uh, and, and the biotech industry is a very economic resilient industry in, in itself. Uh, right, I mean, there's, there's so much funding that goes into it, uh, you know, people need their medicine, people need, uh, uh, these types of things to survive. Uh, so rarely do they take the economic downturn that a lot of these other industries you see.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Absolutely.
Anyone else?
Hi, uh, my name's Tom McEvigan, uh, Situate residence, just over the border there. Um, I actually worked at the site twice, uh, over the past twenty years. So when I was Dow BCMS back in the early two thousands, again, at Alexion. Um, and I just want to kind of give my perspective on, uh, the types of companies that go in there and what they can bring to the town. I can firsthand, uh, express that, you know, we bring in a lot of catering, we have little onsite parties, things like that. Um, a lot of us go out after work, um, into the community, uh, the shopping, um, restaurants, the, uh, you know, they have some good bars over there. But, um, you know, I, I see that there's not a lot of opportunity within Rhode Island overall for biotech. My wife and I both do it. Most of the time, I've actually worked in Massachusetts, and a lot of people I know end up relocating. So to see an opportunity for us to bring it in, into, um, Rhode Island in general, and, um, even in Northern Rhode Island, uh, it's, I think it's a great opportunity for, uh, for Rhode Islanders, um, and the residents, so just wanted to give my support for that.
Great, thank you so much, thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Good evening, uh, my name is Catherine Peña, I am a representative for the Carpenters Union. And I represent twenty families that live in the town of Smithfield, who, who has, have said, uh, sorry, I'm a little nervous. Um, this is a positive impact, impact for their families and their jobs. Not only does it impact the economy and the community and the workforce, but it also directly affects my members and hopefully lower their taxes. Uh, but we all encourage and are in support for this property, uh, project, sorry, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Well, thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, uh, Tom Hodgkins, two hundred, Farnham Pike, I have a couple of comments, but I want to start with what the council has been, uh, focused on with regards to, um, the clawback provision and breach. I don't think if there's a situation here that this company ever gets to breach, because before the breach, they're gonna terminate the contract on their own, which paragraph three gives them the possibility to do. So there is no clawback opportunity here. All of the risk is on the taxpayer here. Um, and if they, if they, uh, terminate for convenience, which this agreement allows them to do, they're gonna get up, they're gonna leave, they're gonna take their tangible property, and the town will be now left in a situation where we have a vacant building and without that tangible property. One thing about the tangible property, we had a lot of discussion about tangible property when we were drafting this ordinance, and whether or not tangible property should be subject to a stabilization agreement. I advocated that it shouldn't be, and the reason it shouldn't be is because it gets up and leaves. Because the whole basis for a stabilization agreement like this is that if the entity that had the benefit of the stabilization leaves, you have an asset in town that's, that's beneficial. But that's not the case if a lot of the stabilization is based on tangible property, because they're gonna take it when they leave. There's no, uh, uh, asset to the town that's attached to the ground. Um, so, I, I mean, it's a clever agreement, I, I, I'd give myself a pat on the back if I had drafted it, but it, there's nothing left here for the taxpayers if this entity, uh, takes the benefit of however long they want to be here and then, um, and then leaves. I think what they're doing here is they're requesting the wrong relief. The relief they should be requesting is to amend the current ordinance that we have to say what they want it to say. It's not to create a parallel inconsistent ordinance. That's not what they should be doing. The relief they should be asking for is amending the current ordinance. I suspect they don't want to do that, because they know they can't get support for that, so they want to create this other ordinance. It's the wrong avenue. Because we created, a number of years ago, and, and I think everyone here was involved, we created this tax stabilization ordinance in the interest of transparency and fairness for businesses that want to come here, because the thought was, if we have this written down, everybody knows what's on the table, come here, and so forth. But now we're ignoring, the proposal is to completely ignore that and to give a totally different deal, um, to this company. I, I don't think that is what our ordinance, um, envisioned. And, and I think that if you're gonna do that for this company, then just repeal the entire tax ordinance that we have, because the next person that comes up here is gonna say the same thing. So, i- i- if that's what you're gonna do, you're effectively gutting the ordinance, um, that we have. Um, just, a, a couple other things, um, i- initially, uh, there's been some, uh, comments about this being a depreciating property. It's not a depreciating property. The new assessment for the property is two and a half million dollars higher than the last assessment, it's assessed at three point eight now. And I, I don't know why that's not in the application, I don't know why that's not in the schedule, but it's not a depreciating property, um, as it stands right now. Um, I, I think the context of the discussion we're having here comes by way of, um, the speaker's comments earlier this year, the tax increases are likely at the state level, we've got a budget deficit, tax increases are likely at the local level. And the question is, what, um, amount of exemption, here it is five point five and a half million dollar exemption, um, is right, um, for this business? What amount is right for the town to bear where we have capital needs, we have, uh, bonds and so forth? Right now, we have more bonds, um, that are coming. I think the question is for the town, is this tax deal dependent on, or is the, is the business coming here dependent on this tax deal? If it is, then we should talk about the money. If it's not, then it's just totally gratuitous, and it's not needed. Will they come here anyways? They've, they've, you heard about the money they've got from the state? They didn't ask for more from the state, is my understanding. Um, I, there's been some discussion in the prior hearings about, well, the property is vacant, so whatever we can do to get somebody there is better than having it vacant. I think that's the wrong premise to start from, because the premise you have to start from is that businesses act logically. Businesses act logically to make money. And there's an investment firm that owns this property that's interested in having it leased out. If it's not leased out, they're losing money for their investors. So, does it make sense that that business would, that that entity would let this property sit vacant for any longer than they had to? No. So, I think what's likely, if this, uh, tax agreement doesn't go through, is that this company goes back to the owner of the property and says, can you sharpen the deal on the lease? We didn't get a tax deal from the town, what can you do for us? I think it's probably the, they, I think this thing is so far down the road that that probably happens, no matter what the council, um, does. I, I assume that when I sit down, they're gonna get up and say, no, this is, this is so close on the razor that if, if you trim this by a nickel, we're leaving. And, you know, they're, I'm, they are, I'm sure they're very good businessmen, and I'd say the same thing if I was in their shoes. But I don't know that that's the case here. With respect to, um, the Budget and Financial Board's review, my understanding from going to that meeting was that there was a recommendation from the Budget and Financial Review Board that if there was additional investment or additional personal property there other than what's been identified, um, that there would be additional, uh, tax liability. That has not been added into the agreement, correct?
No, no, that was a recommendation, they were gonna discuss that.
Okay. Also, one other note I had was that, um, and, and in that vein, this agreement would excuse the company from. the company from filing a tangible tax return. That's not part of our tax stabilization ordinance. That'd be a special term for them. And I think what makes that difficult is that if you excuse them from filing a tangible tax return, then you don't know what's up there and you don't know if there's additional property that we're not getting money for, which then makes the deal more lucrative to them, which we don't know about. So I think that should be considered. And I think that if that's something that, that's again, I think that's one of those terms, if we're going to excuse a company under a tax stabilization agreement from filing a tangible tax return, I think that's something that should be part of the ordinance.
Tom, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to interrupt you. What part of the agreement are you reading where it says that? If you can just point to it.
That's 5C. So five is payment of taxes. On the version of the agreement I'm reading, which also has a document number at the bottom of it, my understanding--
I see now, okay.
That's 5C. Provisions like that, if that's the case, they should be in the ordinance. They shouldn't be something that just applies to this company.
Tom, there is a, there is a provision in the ordinance, I mean, 321-25, so annual certification. So the tax ass has to look at all of our agreements on an annual base, basis to ensure compliance. So that would be, you know, you basically, you're reviewing whether or not equipment's still there.
Well, right, whether it's still there and whether they're using it for manufacturing purpose. I don't think that certification covers whether there's additional things there which the tax return would do. And certainly, I think our ordinance does not envision that it would excuse a company from filing that annual tangible tax return. With respect to the amounts on the schedule, the new assessment is not reflected on the So there's more of a discount here than shown. And that, that discount has more impact than just year one because we're using the base value for year one, two, three. So you're missing out on the $3.8 million assessment for the first three years and backdating it to that 11.25. And I think that's tough for the taxpayers to swallow. I mean, everybody else in the town just got a higher assessment. Everybody else is going to be paying it, except for this business. I think that's, that's a difficult sell. With respect to the increase in the taxes, I think one issue here is that if we look at a lot of other municipalities, a lot of other municipalities say you have to pay, there's a schedule and you have to pay a percent of that year's taxes determined yearly. Here, we're, we're giving this company the benefit of an estimate and locking them in. So if our taxes go up or the rate goes up more than what's estimated here, which is between 2.2 and 2.3%, the town's losing out on that. And if the town's losing out, that means that burden is unshifted for everybody else to pick up. I think the difficulty with the 2.2, 2.3% escalator is that it doesn't account for things like bonds and capital projects that are coming. And I think that if we look at that, what's going to happen in the next 15 to 20 years, we just spent $45 million on the schools. Now we've got a five-year plan that identifies a lot more spending on those same schools, all the other schools, so $55 million. If I read Rides' theory on this five-year plan, I think it essentially provides for constant bonding for the town. It's going to, it's going to tell the town every five years, you're going to take out another bond and spend more money. I think that's where it's going, based on what I've read there. So there are potentially three bond issues just on the schools during the life of this But the escalator stays at the 2.2 or the 2.3. So I think we need to look at that. And I mean, there are other, obviously other things that we have coming up. We've got the capital improvement plan, we've got the fire station, we've got repairs at the hockey rink that are not going to be funded through the enterprise fund and are going to be shifted to the town. So I think those are all capital things that have to be factored into that amount. Lastly, one other comment I had was that I think that a lot of times with these agreements, there are a lot of things promised and what happens is sort of unknown. Rubius came here, they were going to spend $155 million on the facility. They're not here anymore. I think that it would be appropriate to add into the agreement an annual certification by the company as to what they're doing under the agreement, which would include things like the number of employees working full-time in Smithfield, what those salaries are, whether they're, you know, because there's language in the, that they proposed to us about certain things that are going to be done. The number of employees who are purchasing or renting property in town. There, we've heard testimony about people are going to buy houses here, they're going to spend money. There's, language has been promised that there's going to be enhancement of property values. So I think that the annual cert, there should be an annual certification from a company on those issues so that the town can assess whether this has been and will be a good deal for the taxpayers in the years going forward. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. President, if there's no other public comment on this agenda, I am requesting at this point to take the agenda out of order and make a motion with your permission.
Yeah, I want to have--
All right, so you're still on the public hearing, the first matter, so you'd have to continue that public hearing.
Just hang on one second. Jeremy, do you have anything else to add?
No.
No? Okay, I want to close the public hearing.
You can't close it.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Continue the public hearing.
To today, to later today?
It'd be tonight, after, after--
Okay.
If you're taking up item B, it'd be after item B.
Got it.
Okay. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Can we have a motion during the public hearing? Yeah, we continue, we need a motion to continue the public hearing.
For the purposes of--
Taking the item B. Any discussion?
So moved.
Another second. Hold on, favor? Aye, nays?
Nays.
Ayes, ayes. Counselor Warren?
Mr. President, at this point, I would like to make a motion to hear the second item, agenda item, agenda item, letter B.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, hold on, favor? Aye?
Aye.
Nays?
Nays.
Ayes, ayes. We'll take item B?
Just going to open it.
Conduct the public hearing to consider and discuss the Act upon Amendment, Chapter 321, the Court of Ordinances, entitled Taxation, Article 5, entitled Tax Agreements Codified and Potential Tax Stabilization Agreement between the Town of Smithfield and Organis Holdings and Organis Inc. and DVI Technology Way LLC. I declare the public hearing open. Anyone from the public? No one in the public? I'm going to close the public hearing. Counselor Warren?
Do I, can I make a motion during the hearing or it has to be--
The hearing is closed.
Okay. At this point, I would like to make a motion to pass the tax stabilization agreement between Smithfield and Organis Genesis, subject to specific terms to be voted on by the town council at a later date as an ordinance. Should the town council fail to pass the agreement, no ordinance shall take effect.
Have a second. Any discussion? So we're going, I'm not sure I follow the motion. I'm not really clear what the motion is.
So my motion is to pass a tax stabilization agreement between Organis Genesis and Smithfield with specific terms to be determined by the town council and voted on by the town council. Should the town council and Organis Genesis be unable to agree on specific terms and there's no vote taken, no ordinance shall take effect. So it's a, it's a subject to, I'm just trying to keep it specific.
So your motion is to pass the agreement as an ordinance? Is that what your motion is? Or is it to pass just an agreement? Or--
My motion is to pass the--
The ordinance.
--and agreement as an ordinance, subject to later--
But which, which agreement?
Well, there is no agreement at this point. It's, it's a, it was subject to terms later passed.
It's impossible--
Am I doing it wrong?
Yeah.
So the second item on the agenda relates to an ordinance--
Yep.
--that is going to be, obviously, subject to, subject to council approval, be codified, codify in a proposed tax stabilization agreement.
Mm-hmm.
The question is, is what agreement are you--
Passing.
Passing. You're adopting an ordinance that basically references an agreement that hasn't been adopted.
Correct.
Is that, can we do that? How can we do that?
Subject to an agreement being adopted.
Subject to an agreement being adopted.
Well, the terms of that agreement are not, are unknown, so I don't--
Correct.
I get the intent, but I, I don't get, I don't agree with that at all.
Advertised to the public?
Who was advertised to the public is the agreement that's in the ordinance that was in the package.
No, but I mean, scarras, that, in the public, was the public notified that we'd be passing an ordinance based on what we had previously passed as an agreement? So we really can't do this. It's a violation of open meetings still.
It's a public hearing and it can be amended on the floor. It's, there's notice of, there's notice.
The ordinance would require, the ordinance requires an agreement. So you need to have some sort of agreement that you're voting on.
Why can't it be a subject to? There's no agreement. Why can't I pass an agreement subject to? Why can't I pass an ordinance or request an ordinance be created subject to an agreement? Similarly, when there's a business that's requesting whatever, a special dance license and they don't have their paperwork in order, we allow them to have that special dance license, subject to them getting their paperwork in order. Should their paperwork not become in order, they don't get that license.
There's a big difference between a special dance license and an ordinance, which is a law--
Well, the concept is the same.
Passing a law, there's a huge difference there. I think, you know, I think the applicant was worried about, you know, enforcement, but I mean, this, this would be a real legal quagmire. I think this would be, make this whole thing a lot more challengeable in court. I just think this, I don't know how we could pass an ordinance when we don't know what's in the ordinance.
So that's, that would be subject to, unless--
What?
Unless you're saying this is not proper--
The proper way to do it would be to adopt the agreement, come to terms on an agreement, and then obviously move on to the ordinance.
Okay, that's, so I'll amend my motion to pass item B as drafted and then subject to an agreement.
That's not what you said, correct?
That's not what you said.
That's not what you said, okay, what's, sorry.
Basically, basically come to terms on an agreement and then you move on to the ordinance and, because the ordinance is referred, the agreement's referred to as an Exhibit A, as part of the ordinance that was advertised.
We'd have to go back to the public hearing, my prior agenda.
Yeah, I'll go back to public.
Okay. I withdraw my motion. I think both, I think, I don't want to speak for--
I know what you're trying to do.
I don't want to speak for Organis Genesis, but it seems as though that one cannot be done without the other. And negotiations on item A are not going to take place today unless there is some type of, some type of action on item B. So if, if we're unable to vote on item B without item A, then I think both items should be continued to a different date and allow an agreement to be in place.
Where are we on the agenda?
We're on item B right now.
We're on B, but we need to move back to A.
We got to move back to A. Public hearing. Okay, we're back in the public hearing?
Yes.
Is the public hearing still open?
Yes. No, it wasn't closed.
It was never closed, continue. All right. Jeremy?
Don't we need a motion?
Mr. President, so I have one thought on the ordinance issue. The, the ordinance is authorizing the town manager to execute the agreement, subject to amendments, at least the ordinance--
Well, as you are proposing, that's, those are your proposed amendments, the existing one. The existing one that's been advertised is not.
Okay, so thank you. Let me, let me, let me go to that. Bear with me just one second. I can't figure it out. So we proposed with the amendment an ordinance in a different form than what was ultimately advertised by the town. So in an effort to bring those two draft ordinances into, so they were consistent without going back and completely revising, we had suggested making a few surgical changes to the ordinance that was advertised, which, which you can do pursuant to the charter, as long as they're not, I forget the language, so let's circle on you, you would probably know better than I, but you can, you can amend an ordinance on the floor. So we had suggested, and if it comes time to pass this, happy to, happy to spell these out in more detail, but for the purposes of this discussion, let me just say that our suggestion was essentially that paragraph D of the ordinance be revised to state that the tax agreement in substantially the form set forth in Exhibit A is hereby authorized and approved. And that the Smithfield town manager acting on behalf of the town is hereby authorized to execute the tax agreement in substantially the form attached here to his Exhibit A, with such changes, additions, or modifications as may be necessary in his discretion. So, you know, I suppose the question would be, can you authorize that ordinance, can you pass that ordinance, authorizing the town manager to execute and finalize that agreement, consistent with the direction of the town council, and then, and then take a vote on that?
Right now, we're still on the agreement.
I understand. Yep, no, I understand. I'm talking--
The question is, can we arrive, can we arrive in an agreement here and finalize this so we can move on to the ordinance?
Yeah, so the challenge is, is that as Counselor Bobus has, has pointed out, there's multiple issues with the agreement that we have a problem with. I can't ask you all to tell me which ones you're okay with and which ones you're not okay with, right? I mean, that's the challenge here for us.
I think the major issue is the provision in the draft agreement relating to potential conflicts with the town ordinance and the issue of recapture. I just, we, we, you know, we've been debating this--
I know, but, but two different issues, right?
Right, right.
Because if we don't have the language in the agreement that says that it's passed by ordinance and the, and the language of the agreement, where there's a conflict supersedes, let's just say hypothetically, we say, we keep that language in the agreement. So the agreement now says, if there's a conflict, the agreements, the language of the agreement and the ordinance supersedes the existing codified ordinance. However, X, Y, Z, you know, recapture is added to the agreement, right? That would address the commercial concern of the town vis a vis the risk that the company leaves. And it would say to us, give us what we absolutely have to have, which is confidence we have an enforceable agreement. So it's, so it's really two different, to me, it's two different issues and, and it's hard to, it's impossible to resolve one without-- hard to, it's impossible to resolve one without, without resolving the other, it sounds like.
So what I was hearing earlier is that you have some authority to modify this agreement, past what your original objections were by your client, is that accurate?
Subject to, subject to, I have, I have authority to make a suggestion that's responsive to your concern, your specific concern about recapture in the early years.
So what are the suggestions?
What was that?
What are you asking, what?
I'm not authorized to, to, to make that proposal while the other, the issues are open.
What do you mean, you're not authorized to make the proposal? That's why we're here, you know?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not authorized. I have a, I have a publicly traded client, and I have certain authorization, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna overstep on that.
So it seems like we're at a little bit of a crossroads where we cannot vote, we physically, according to the solicitor, cannot vote on something that doesn't exist. So your options right now would be to get that authorization from your client, and we can try to make headway on the agreement, or we vote for the agreement as it's drafted and then vote on item B, and then you would have to come back here for amendments on item A. Is that accurate, Anthony?
Correct.
Okay. So leave the choice up to you, but we're all here now. The first one might be easier.
Can I, can I make another suggestion that just occurred to me?
Mm-hmm.
What if we approve the agreement as submitted with the one revision that I made, suggested it, whenever we started, six? So that would be, oh, just to be clear, none of those other, as we went through one by one, those other red lines, they would all be out, you would vote, you would approve the agreement. Then we would go to the next agenda item, and we could make an amendment on the floor to that ordinance that amends, that addresses your recapture concern, and if we can come to agreement and it's acceptable, then that works. And if we can't come to agreement, we have no ordinance, we have no effective agreement, and Bob hasn't been authorized to sign it.
I think to ask the town council to approve something that they don't approve of, and then we amend it, is much, is significantly messier than you amending it after the fact, respectfully. I personally have no problem with item, with number three and four on page three about the terms, and the way that's all changed. That doesn't bother me, I think that's fine, I think that makes sense. But as for the other suggestions by the solicitor, although I might not personally agree with them, I'm not comfortable making changes without having the full information from his client, otherwise. So that's where I'm at.
Well, I'm happy to have a conversation, as you suggested, with, you know, my client, if we can take a brief recess.
Leave that to the discretion of the president.
You need another recess?
Seems that way.
Just like school. We'll give you another recess.
All right, thank you.
This is the bottom line.
My office, we can't make an agreement with, we can't pass something that
No, see, see, but the problem is...
His way is where the highway.
I don't understand.
We, if, we pass what Anthony wants us to pass, we pass it as an ordinance, then we can negotiate the terms. But he says pass it.
It's the eleventh, it's the eleventh, what did I tell you today? It's the eleventh hour, a quarter to five, they're making more changes.
Hey, we're back on the record. This is Savage.
Thank you, Mr. President. All right, so...
You need a lunch break?
I need a break for something. What I need is a chair up here. I'm on, I'm on my last leg.
You only got one.
I know. So this is, this is where we're at in trying to, in trying to put all of these pieces together, and, and Councilwoman Bovas, I think you outlined it well. You know, I think, I really think that the changes in section three and section four are substantively not changes at all, really, because it was just the inverse of an extension option. So to recap, that leaves the upon council approval change in section nine. It leaves the in accordance with section 32122B in section 10, which goes to the ordinance issue and the recapture specifically. And it leaves the deletions in section 14 and section 15, which go to the, the fact that the, that the agreement would be passed by ordinance and will supersede, where there's a conflict, it'll supersede. It, it, I'm trying to be responsive here to two concerns. One is Solicitor Galan's concern that the, the, there, there has to be some element of recapture, so that the agreement is not, the ordinance and agreement are not repugnant to the terms of the general ordinance, which is a distinction that, though I don't necessarily agree with it from a legal perspective, it is a distinction that's different from saying, well, we're clarifying the terms of the general ordinance. And then I'm trying to also be responsive, Councilwoman Bovas, to your comments about how a departure or a default in the very early years, where the taxes have been stabilized, they haven't started to increase, but most importantly, I think the money hasn't been spent fully, the 95 million is being spent over those three years, so presumably a termination in year one. Your point, I believe, not to put words in your mouth, but I believe your point was that that would hit the town particularly hard, because then that residual value would maybe not be in the building. So if, subject to, and, and to be absolutely clear, this is not, in our mind, a negotiation of these other terms of the agreement, which is why we tried to stress so much that they are absolutely critical to us, believing that this is an enforceable agreement. That's what this is about, in terms of those other changes to the agreement. So subject to accepting all of those changes, I've been authorized to, to suggest, again, in, in an effort to mitigate that construction period specifically, that we would add an additional provision to the agreement that would say, if the agreement is terminated in those first three years, Organogenesis would be liable to pay back the stable, the unstabilized tax payment amount, or that delta, which is equal to 290,000 and change in year two is the delta, and in year three, the delta is 303,000 and change. So it's about a $600,000 concession there, again, in response directly to that comment about, about the construction period risk. So, look, I, I, I know that various members of the council, certainly the town administration knows this, this has been a very long process in this agreement. We've all worked really hard on this. We're all trying to do what's best for, for our constituents, obviously, that's your charge, but I really do believe that this is a good agreement for the state, I believe it's a good agreement for the city, and this is, this is, this is all we've got in terms of being able to accept this agreement as written. So I would, I would humbly suggest that perhaps the council can consider that suggestion in light of all of the economic and, and direct and indirect benefits of, of the project, and in light of all of the additional, you know, that 1.5 million that the town manager, interim town manager highlighted in those first three years, you're basically talking about a guaranteed 2.1 million dollar benefit to the town in the next three years. I think that that is a, a very real commitment, and I hope that the council feels similarly.
So just to be clear, if it's, if the breach occurred in the fourth year, there'd be no recapture?
That's correct.
So it, this does not comport with our ordinance at all, then? Because our ordinance requires full recapture, correct?
Your ordinance requires, respectfully, that if the termination Your ordinance requires respectfully that if the termination were to occur on the 19th year 364th day, that all $6 million be paid back. So, respectfully, no, it's not consistent entirely with that requirement.
Right. Just to be clear.
Just to be clear.
Jerry, let me ask you a question. So, when you look at the ordinance, aside from the money piece, if you looked at the items that would result in a material breach, I mean, those items basically would be a result, actually, most likely, without seeing the terms of the lease, they'd probably result in a default in the terms of the lease anyway.
I don't disagree with that.
So... And I understand the liability. Obviously, you're a publicly traded company, and you don't want a liability that's listed on your books for, like, 20 years.
Yeah, look, I mean, do I think that this is what this deal should live or die over? No, I don't. I think, and I've said that to you privately, Solicitor Galan, I think that there's been a tremendous amount of negotiation over the extent of the investment, over the extent of the stabilization, over the number of jobs, over the timing of the jobs, and the salary of the jobs, and all of that. I mean, there's so many things that are critical to this deal that have been settled.
Yeah, usually, deals live or die over the numbers. This will probably be, you know, I mean, this is incredible that we're talking about just a language in a paragraph here on a deal of this size.
Mr. President, a quick question for you. Would Organogenesis be willing to put their money on the table over the next three years so we could use it for capital and save us money, that theoretically saves us money in the future? Because if we can get the capital out of the way...
No. And to explain why, it's, you know, we're talking about an attenuated risk of having to spend that money. So, to spend the money, to avoid the risk of having to spend the money, would be, I think, self-defeating from their perspective, especially in...
I just think it would be more palatable to the people sitting here.
I absolutely understand. I see where you're coming from, and you and I have had a lot of conversations about creative potential, but that's just not what I'm authorized to go to.
I think at this point, I think at this point, I'm talking to my colleagues. Maybe we'll continue the public hearing until next week to iron out all the differences. Go ahead.
No, I'm sorry.
We all, every one of us up here, wants this to happen. But we can't put the bull's eye on the taxpayer. I think every one of us, if we were to agree on this or not to agree on this, we'll probably run out of town, leaving the taxpayer hanging. Plus, it doesn't match the ordinance that we currently pass, which is illegal. I don't want to be on the front page of the Province Journal. Nor do I think my colleagues want to be on the front page of the Province Journal. Or local prob, or any other of the others. This is a deal that we agreed to, but it doesn't match what we currently have.
I'd respectfully suggest, first of all, you know, we've worked hard here. I've had a lot of conversations, including tonight. We came with a final and best offer, Mr. President, and respectfully, the council should vote on that offer, because we are not going to entertain any further changes to the agreement. And I disagree with your perception about your political risk, but that is, that's your prerogative, obviously, as is the prerogative to vote any which way the council deems fit, and we're respectful of that. But this is where we are. And if there's not a deal that is to be had, we have to consider what options we have to allow the company to make its investment in.
Um, Solicitor Galan, if... Instead of continuing the public hearing, that's fine with me as well, but I want to suggest something to, which might not matter if there's no more negotiations to be had, but if we pass, if we were to vote and pass on the agreement as drafted, and then pass it as an ordinance, say that passes as well, is... Question one, is there a possibility to amend that agreement in the future? Is that even an option for us or Organogenesis? If it's agreed upon, it would be, correct?
So, I don't...
Okay, let me rephrase. If we passed this agreement as drafted, your draft, just now...
Oh, okay. So, you're talking about the agreement as, with its proposed amendments?
Yes.
It's in front of the council?
Correct. If the agreement in front of us is passed, and then Item B is also passed, and that agreement is codified as an ordinance, does, do the parties have the option to amend going forward? And the reason I'm asking this is because instead of continuing the public hearing and not having the ordinance issue solved, if the ordinance issue is resolved in the positive, then there's still, and there's still conversation. If it's resolved in the negative, there's just no point.
Wouldn't it be easier to just amend an agreement? If you're trying to amend an ordinance, we have to go through the whole advertising process and everything.
Well, that's kind of what I'm asking. Like, is an amendment... The reason I think amending the ordinance in this situation makes sense, because if an ordinance is not created, there's no deal.
Is that the fact? There's no deal, there's no ordinance, period?
100%.
So, it's just like, we're spending this time on these terms, and I get why we're bouncing back and forth. We're spending time on these terms, which could potentially not matter, depending on how the vote for the ordinance goes. So, my suggestion, and I'm open to hearing discussion on it, is passing the agreement as a placeholder, not saying we agree with the agreement, not saying they agree with the agreement, just passing it as a placeholder to get to Item B, decide that issue, and then, however, I think that would only make sense if we can then amend the agreement. If the agreement can't be amended, then I don't see why we would do that. But if it can be, which I think it can, then I think it's fine.
It's part of the financial, it's part of the financial, it'd be an amendment to the ordinance.
That's what I think it's allowed, I'm just checking.
So, we have to go through that whole process?
Absolutely.
Excuse me, Mr. President.
Hang on, Anthony's gonna say something.
So, Angelica, basically, any future amendment to the, like, if you adopted it as, you know, you just discussed, and you made an amendment to it, and you were proposed to make an amendment to this agreement down the road with the consent of Organogenesis, it'd probably have to go back to the Financial Budget Review Board, depending on what the terms are. Because don't forget, this whole agreement comes out of the ordinance related to the adoption of a tax stabilization agreement, and it has a procedure set in place, so you can't just change the agreement.
But you have to go through the process.
Correct, correct.
But that doesn't mean it can't be done.
Correct, correct.
Correct, correct. But their issue is time as well.
Is there a timing problem?
There is a timing problem, but I can't speak about it publicly.
That's fine, okay. We're trying, I'm trying here to make something make sense for everybody, but I'm trying to put these options on the table. Continuing the public hearing, what I'm hearing, does not give you negotiation room because you're unaware of the ordinance outcome, right?
Respectfully, we've negotiated for several months.
Okay, so even if this item, even if we do pass as an ordinance, if we do what I just suggested, and it is, it's passed as is, with an, as an ordinance, with the option to amend, you're saying there's just no other negotiations that you're interested in taking place in anyway? Is that accurate?
What I'm trying to say is that in our most recent exchange, I went back to the client. I spoke with the CEO of the company, which is not a small thing. And I got a very clear direction that this was a best and final proposal. So, my comment is, is that I, you know, is it possible that someone changes their mind? It's always possible someone changes their mind, but my direction was, was a best and final proposal. I think at this point, I would request that we get clarity from the council about whether or not the town of Smithfield feels that proposal is acceptable or not.
The proposal with the construction, the three years, you're saying? Yeah. So, if the construction period goes over, you know, as it often does, what happened in that case? It's just three years flat, kind of thing?
Yeah, I mean, I think that candidly, it would not a discussion I had.
Okay.
You know, just to be completely honest with you, Councilwoman Toppin.
Yeah, no problem. Just thinking, if it goes five years, then what? You know, something happens in the fourth year?
Yeah.
I understand, thank you.
Do you have any other comments? Based on what I'm hearing, I'm going to make a motion to...
It's a public hearing?
No, it's not closed.
Not closed.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President.
Anyone else?
I'm gonna close the public hearing. Mr. President, I'd like to move to approve the application submitted by the applicant Organogenesis for a tax stabilization agreement with the amendments to the agreement as proposed by the town solicitor, the tax assessor, and the interim town manager.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Having not all the finger?
Aye.
Ladies, ayes, have it. Somebody stole my paperwork. I'm gonna take up Item B and conduct the public hearing and consider and discuss, act upon the amendment of Chapter 321 Court of Ordinances entitled Taxation, Article 5, entitled Tax Agreements, codify the potential tax stabilization agreement between the town of Smithfield and Organis Holdings Incorporated and Organis Inc. and DVI Technology Way LLC. I declare the public hearing open. Any questions? Any public? Hearing not, I'll close the public hearing. Councilman Mimbobas.
There were some proposed amendments that the applicant submitted to the draft ordinance. It's in our red. Do you want to look those over quickly before you vote?
Thank you. What's the solicitor's opinion on these? Motion to approve as amended.
Hang on one second.
And in my motion, I would like to add the caveat that I just expressed to Attorney Savage. Requests for amendments are always welcome, is the caveat I'll add.
Hang on one second.
Vice President Mimbobas, can you explain that? I'm sorry, I didn't catch that last part.
Hang on one second, I gotta let Anthony look at something with Mike. Hang on one second. I thought it was the town president that was executing.
Correct, so it's gonna be the town president.
Counselor President, I just got a couple of questions.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Jim Bennett. I represent the Commerce Corporation, the president of the Commerce Corporation. I'm not used to all this legal ease, but in my understanding that you're not accepting the three-year clawback, reducing the clawback from 20 to, or 19 to three years.
That's correct. We passed, what we passed, we approved the agreement as amended by the, our town solicitor, our tax assessor, and our town manager. And their amendments were to allow the agreement to comply with our town ordinance.
Get them confused. Does that mean it's over?
No, it's not over. I mean, of course, the company has the opportunity to agree to the agreement. I mean...
They're not going to agree to the agreement.
Well, you know...
They gave you a chance to...
You know, that would kind of be, that would kind of be insane, based on, you know, that paragraph, which, you know, really, I mean, are we supposed to be up here having this sworn in to the town council, taken an oath, and then pass an agreement that violates our ordinance? How can we do that? How can you ask us to do that?
The council...
We definitely want them here. We want them to come here as much as you do, maybe more. The way you're asking us to do...
They're not gonna come. They're not gonna come. The way this is set right now...
That's up to them.
They're not going to come. And you talk about getting in the Province Journal for blowing a deal here. You'll get one for doing that, too.
I didn't blow any deals. I approved their application, subject to the changes, to make it comply with our ordinance, which is what we're required to do as public officials. That's our job.
All right, so how do you, we make it so it fits into what this company, they've given something right here. They didn't want to do the clawback at all, but then they said, "Well, wow, three years."
But it still violated our ordinance, that's why we couldn't go along with it. I mean, if they can come back with something that complies with our ordinance, that makes everybody happy, we're here.
Counselman, I think you're not speaking for me when you say the issue was the lack of compliance with the ordinance. That's not my problem with this at all, so I just...
I didn't mean to speak to you.
I just want you to, I just want Commerce to know and Organogenesis know. That's, my issue is not the compliance with the ordinance at all. The reason I voted in favor of what we just did is because I want to get to Item B, passing it as an ordinance, which is, it's my understanding that's the assurances that Organogenesis needs that it will become an ordinance to make some more decisions on the actual agreement itself. What I was hearing today was that the substance of the agreement becomes moot if it's not an ordinance. So, that's the reason I voted in favor of this, so we can get to Item B.
Unfortunately, I can't follow all this. Let me just, let me just... How do we get it so we get this company here? How do we, how do we do that? How do we work together to get this company here and not go back to Massachusetts? The deal that I crafted with the state... The deal that I crafted with the state was, uh, first of all, you're totally wrong in some of the stuff you're talking about. The, uh, was, was it, was it quality, was it quality jobs provision, seventy-five-hundred-dollar tax credit for the jobs, which we monitor? The total package was somewhere around seventeen thousand dollars from different agencies of the government, because this is the perfect situation, the perfect place to be, in Smithfield, Rhode Island, in an empty building, that will not be getting any taxes. So I'm asking, how do we fix this? How do we? It doesn't seem like the company's asking for too much. The company is not asking for too much. They're investing, gonna invest, you know all the sizzle.
It's my understanding that if it's an ordinance, some problems resolve.
I'm sorry?
It's my understanding if it's, and if this agreement is an ordinance, some of these problems resolve, meaning if it's codified as a law in our town, what their contract is with us becomes a law in our town, that there's going to be some problems that will resolve, because there's some assurances that their agreement is enforceable. Otherwise, it's not. That's...
How do we do that? How do we, how do we do that, guys?
Well, that's what we're about to do.
Can't get you that off, how do we do it?
The cleanest way, Jim, to get this thing done would have been to amend, you know, see if there's an appetite to address the issue that they raised tonight with an amendment to the tax stabilization ordinance, but the, that's a legislative function of the council. They, you know, any potential amendment, if they wanted to go down that road, would have to be advertised and, and, um, and vetted. Obviously, when this, this ordinance was drafted, ordinance was drafted in '22, it's been amended four times since then.
Terrible ordinance. I've never seen an ordinance like that. I've done tons of ta, tax stabilizations in Providence, everyone's individual. A blanket ordinance for just, it doesn't make any sense.
Understood that the...
That's what we're trying to do, is create an or, like, right now, the item on the agenda right now is to create an ordinance for them specifically. So now that's my position, I don't, that's not what your position is, but my position is, is if we create an ordinance for them specifically, their specific terms, regardless of the conflicts with the ordinance, can become done, basically, can be, can be handled. So that's why I voted this way, is so, so we can do whatever we want, so we can do what they want specifically for them, as opposed to following our ordinance. I know that's not...
How do we put Humpty Dumpty back? Because as it stands right now, this company is not gonna come here. How do we fix it? Can we fix it?
Yes.
That's why we, I think that, that's why I just did what I did.
What's the timeframe to fix it?
Let Anthony explain something.
Okay.
The cleanest, the cleanest way to fix it would be an amendment to the ordinance, and, and the council has to vote on the language that they're gonna utilize. I don't know what your timeframe is, is an advertising process, you know, I mean, it's under, under, under the charter. If, if the agreement...
The agreement can be changed anytime.
Hang on, hang on one second. If the agreement that you just passed...
The agreement you just passed can be amended by the town council. The two parties can agree, is that correct or not correct?
Would they, any amendment would have to be written between the two parties.
Okay. Which means it could happen after tonight.
But, but it's still gonna be consistent with the ordinance.
I, I'm not saying...
That's not my vote.
Not consistent with the ordinance. So, so the way, the cleanest way to do it would be to amend the ordinance, to give the council a flexi, flexibility?
The general ordinance, you're saying?
The general ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, we could.
Mr. President, could I just say a few words?
That, that'll take a, a period of time, but...
So, I, I just wanna, lots been said, last fifteen minutes, so I just want to address a few things. First of all, respectfully, I don't think the vote that was taken was proper. I don't think that agreement can be approved. It wasn't advertised. You guys took changes substantive, very substantive changes to the agreement that was advertised in the application. I, I don't think that that was before the council...
I mean, I don't think they're substantive changes, Jeremy, they're consistent with our ordinance.
Anthony?
They're not substantive, they're not substantive changes, Jerry.
Okay, so respectfully, I disagree with that, with that, but, but...
Right.
Most critically amongst those changes were the changes striking the language, because the terms of this agreement have been authorized and approved pursuant to an ordinance of the town council. That's what I was trying to say, like, you can't, you can't break them apart. You can't, you can't strike that language, make it so the agreement is now not an effective modification of the existing ordinance, and then pass it by ordinance and have it be an effective enforceable agreement. That, that's what I was trying to, that's what I was trying to say, so...
You're saying on page...
Page six, section fourteen and fifteen.
Fourteen on the bottom over there?
Yeah, fourteen and fifteen, both side.
Does the solicitor have a position on if... On that?
What page are you on?
Page six, item fourteen, the stricken part, and I, I guess item fifteen, too, a stricken part.
That's, that's, goes back to the issue...
I understand, but can, can this, can this document as drafted be an ordinance if it specifically says that? If that, if that item has been stricken, is my question?
One second.
Okay. I thought you, I thought Organogenesis wanted, like, what I was hearing earlier, is if this became an ordinance, you guys can get to step two.
It's gotta respectfully have, it's gotta be passed by ordinance, and it has to be clear that the provisions of that ordinance, insofar as they conflict, supersede. And, and I know that everyone's focused on recapture, and, and we've had a lot of conversation about recapture, but there's multiple other differences between the plain language of the ordinance and the plain language of the agreement.
But why is it not satisfactory for just an ordinance to be passed with an agreement in place, and then that agreement be amended to fit your needs?
Because of the provision of the charter that says if there's an amendment to an existing ordinance, it has to be explicitly called out, the sections it references. That's why, that's why this language in fifteen makes specific reference to, uh, makes specific reference to the, to the relevant sections.
Repeat what you just said, if there's an amendment to an ordinance, the charter says what?
That there has to be a specific reference to the, to the sections that are being amended.
So is this an amendment to an ordinance, or is this a new one?
So when I, when I, when I, when we started tonight, I said it's one of two things. It's either an amendment, and it's effective because it's an amendment, or it's an ordinance, and it's effective because it's an ordinance. Because it's either or, and I think technically speaking, legally, it's hard for us to say with definitive certainty which it is, because the term amend is not defined in the charter.
Uh huh.
I think we have to be safe, and I think we have to treat it as if it's both, and that's why, that's why the language is drafted like it is.
I don't even know.
What if the agreement was amended, was, was to be voted on and accepted as submitted with the application, subject to the town manager's negotiation of an acceptable, in his discretion, acceptable, uh, uh, recapture provision?
My, I want to tell you what my goal it was, and then you can tell me how to fulfill it, okay? What I wanted to do was just put something, I tried to vote on just making something, this hypothetical thing, an ordinance.
Yep.
That wasn't allowed, I get it, whatever. Okay, so we, so I went back, and I just wanted to put something in the box, words, whatever it was, these words that nobody likes, words that some people like, whatever, just so we can vote on item B.
Yep.
To create an ordinance for you, to then amend to fit your needs.
Yep.
So that was my goal, is to have an ordinance in place for you and your comp, and Organis, and your client.
Yep.
So that you can amend separate and apart from our general ordinance.
Sure.
Specifically to fit your needs.
I understand.
So as we're moving forward right now, passing this as drafted, not saying I agree with it, I know some people feel differently, passing this as drafted with these strikeouts, and then now if we were to subsequently pass this as an ordinance, are you unable to amend this ordinance to fit your needs?
Yes, without reapplying would be my position, or, or without you amending the, the enabling ordinance to provide a different application process.
Okay.
Can I make, I have another thought?
Yeah.
What if you pass the agreement as submitted, again, in the application? That's with all the changes I've discussed, with the addition of a term that says there'll be a recapture provision no less than three years to be, to be determined by the town administration, town manager, you know, consultation with the solicitor, whatever the case may be, which would give, and then if you pass the ordinance, it would give the company certainty, they don't have to agree, but it would give the company certainty that they got what they needed structurally, in terms of the ordinance, and it would allow for a negotiation to happen. And, you know, if you want to give further guidance or further direction to the town manager, require him to consult with the council, um, you know, that's all, I think all of that's in your prerogative, but I believe that if we take that path, it would allow us to leave tonight with the framework of an agreement with one item to be agreed upon.
Meaning?
Meaning the recapture.
Renegotiate, yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry, uh, Councilman...
It's not agreed upon.
It's not agreed upon until it's, you know, I mean, yeah, well, to be agreed, I, I think I said to be agreed upon, yeah, 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 sorry, yeah. Important word there, too, if I left it out, my mistake.
So why not? I'm fine with that, and, and the reason I'm fine with that is because the whole purpose I even voted to pass that original agreement was as a placeholder. I had no sub, I, I didn't make determinations as to the substance of that agreement, it was strictly to get to item B. That was, so I think if there's provisions, if it's, if there's provisions that both parties dislike and like equally, and then it's passed subject to an agreement, I'm fine with that.
Why not until the end of the construction period?
No, it's from the, it's from the end of the construction period until the twenty-year mark, is what you just proposed, correct?
No, we said three years.
I thought you said...
So what if the construction period, I already asked you this, but in, in this new proposal, as we know, that's the biggest risk period. So if it takes thirty more years, why not just leave the language as, till the end of the construction period?
Yeah, so, so again, I would, I would, um, I'd just say we're not leaving with a, with an agreement that's ready to be signed, in any event, that's being over there, right? So, um, I would, I would suggest, the language I suggested was the minimum of the three has been authorized, no less than.
No more.
And I think it would be, uh, well, I said no more, from my client's perspective, I'm saying for the, for, for your perspective, no less than. Uh, I think it would be appropriate for you, Councilwoman Toppin, to, to direct, instruct, weigh in, you know, whatever, whatever, I don't know, the, the formal, um, the formal, I, I think the town manager has heard your comment, I guess that's what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to, I'm sorry.
So the, the language, if termination in the first three years, clawback language, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I misheard you that second time, but that's the, that's the original language you propose, is what you're proposing again?
Yes.
Okay. If this, if that's the case, are, are, do you guys have more, more negotiations to be had if this is passed as an ordinance? Is that, is that the case? There's possib, there's possibility that you're coming back to the table, is the question?
I, I'm, I've, I've told you my position on that, in terms of the company's position on that, all I can say is that if we, if we don't do it that way, I think there's no possibility of a deal.
Okay.
If we do it that way, I think there's a possibility of a deal, we're not home yet, but I think there's a possibility.
Well, it would be in everyone's best interest to continue the public hearing until next Tuesday at six o'clock, so you can work all the kinks. No.
Which option is better for you and your client? This, this, or continuing?
Which, which is this.
What you just proposed.
Definitely what I just proposed.
With the option, of course, for the town to reject?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to reconsider item A.
Hang on a second. Any discussion?
Reconsider what?
The vote of item A.
Excuse me?
The vote of item A.
We can't go back to item A, we're on item B. You can't go back to an agenda, right, and can we?
Already, you already voted on it.
Yeah.
It can't be reconsidered.
She's in the affirmative, though. It's been advertised.
It's the same meeting.
You can reconsider.
The veiling side can reconsider. Am I wrong?
No.
Don't we have a book up here?
We can reconsider at the next meeting. Was that?
At the next meeting.
The next meeting, though, has to be in the next meeting, isn't it?
Recession.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we could take a recess, we're happy to look into that question.
It says, the Roberts rules, according to my very quick Google search, says within a limited timeframe, usually on the same day as the original vote, it can be reconsidered. So I just, I don't, I think we're getting too technical, guys, like, honestly. Just get everyone back at the table, that's the whole point of my, of this, of these votes for today. It's not to pass a specific agreement, it's not to reject a specific, it's just to get everything back, it's just to finalize, to hammer out the final thing, and if, I don't care what the agreement says at this point, because it's not a real agreement, it's not passed, it's not codified, it's not going to be codified, it's not voted on by the town council. So it just, it doesn't matter, it's to, it's to give assurances to both sides that this is moving forward, and it's not dying. If it's dying, then fine, but if it's, I don't think anybody wants that to be the case, so if we vote to move it forward, then we can decide at a later date whether or not that agreement is suitable, both parties can decide that later. But to take no action and continue a public hearing after we just did all this is crazy.
Attorney Savage, I, I'm, thank you for your patience, I know you've repeated yourself a hundred times, but can you just clarify just for one last time, what exactly to reconsider? Seems a little open-ended, is that what I'm hearing? I just, there's a lot of talk, you know?
Yeah, but, but I don't understand your question, Councilwoman Toppin.
We're going back to, to do what exactly? Your suggestion.
Yep. I, if we could, I, could we take a brief recess? Because I'm myself...
That's up to the president.
Take five.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Mr. President. And I'll answer the question.
No worries, no, thank you.
We have a recess. You, you gotta just...
That's not gonna be tolerated, is it?
You're gonna tolerate him making personal attacks from a microphone, and then come over and say something to me, and then run behind that door?
No, we're not gonna be the one...
You're not saying anything to him?
I'll talk to him and I'll talk to you, we're not gonna tolerate this kind of personal attack.
He must, he must have...
Mr. Nussbaum? There's one of them now.
Well, that's what I heard.
There's one of them now. He just told me to go back to Massachusetts. I'm a resident of this town, he's your...
But Mike asked me...
I'm a tax attorney in this town, and I appreciate it.
And I, you was just trying to... Give us some information.
He's been told... If the council is inclined to reconsider...
We're off the record, Tom, I don't know if that's...
All right.
I'm sorry. I just don't, I just have a feeling the party's not being able to... Let me go back on maybe.
So, 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 yeah. The issue, the issue here was not under normal circumstances, under normal circumstances, okay? This was, this was a public hearing, I'm advertising agenda, you know? So now you're going back to open a public hearing, it was already closed. They voted on, so, you know, that's, but Roberts rules does say you can reconsider. I should, this might be a little different situation, but... So if we can reconsider...
Yeah.
Yeah, well, so we say we pass a motion to reconsider. Then we were going to vote against.
Are you changing, you're changing, you're changing, whatever the language is, you're voting to amend?
That would violate our charter, though.
I mean, I don't know. Well, I don't know what they, what they, what they, what's the language that they want to tag?
Three years.
Yeah.
That violates that charter.
Oh, above. No, there was other language. Besides three. Oh, up to, up to, up to three and less than 20. Mike, I think that's what he said, if I'm not mistaken. Up to three and less than 20. I think that's what he said.
Up to three.
Up to three, but less than 20. So if it happens at 15, it works. Happens at 10, it works, like you said before. Up to three, but less than 20.
So if they breach at three, we get 600,000. If they breach at four, we get?
Up, no, up to 20, but less, more than three, but less than 20. I believe that he said.
Breach between three and 20, we get 20?
Yes.
Get the clawback.
I believe that's what he said.
Okay, let's clarify.
I'm sorry.
I'm not, I'm not.
Yeah, so we went in because we were trying to get a.
Going back on the record. Reconsider. Good, John. Welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. President. And excuse me, but I don't recall exactly where we left off. So how can I? I know Councilwoman Tapi had a question that I.
What exactly is the new? Thank you. Is the new proposal that you're asking for in terms of where we're at? We're left off. Briefly, you don't have to go over through the whole thing.
Sure, so I think where we left off was I was suggesting the possibility of reconsidering the vote. Taking a motion to reconsider the vote, voting on that, submitting a new motion to approve the agreement as submitted with the application, subject to two changes. One, the change to the extension language to make it a 20-year term with an early termination option. And a second change that would that would provide that there would be a recapture provision, not less than three years, to be finalized by the town manager.
Thank you.
With the council approval.
So ideally, we'd really like to not have to come back before the council on this. That's why we're trying to establish a minimum of three, just from a timing perspective.
We have the right to do that.
Yeah, we have the right to do whatever you want.
Also?
Yeah, I think so.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider agenda item A.
I have a second. Any discussion?
I think that we passed the agreement, we passed the application, we approved the application for the tax stabilization agreement. The only changes that we approved were those recommended by the town solicitor so that the agreement was legal and not illegal because the agreement would therefore violate our town ordinance. So I think that we should not reconsider, we should stay with our original agreement, the original agreement that we passed with the amendments to make it legal, to make it in compliance with our ordinance as recommended by the town solicitor. In the future, we can always pass an ordinance, and I think I think many people on the council want to pass an ordinance that we can address some of the issues that were raised with respect to recapture. I think the issue of, you know, having a recapture after, you know, 19 years is, you know, that's a legitimate issue that probably the council should consider. We can amend the ordinance quickly if that's a major issue and, you know, then we can, from there, we could, then it would be legal to, of course, you know, amend our agreement accordingly. So I think that's the proper way to proceed, not to, not to, you know, approve an agreement that's illegal because it violates our ordinance.
Well, it'll only violate our ordinance for a few weeks when we do the ordinance. Around the five-yard line here.
Even if it's three minutes.
Around the five-yard line.
It's a violation.
Let's assume the amended ordinance will pass as well, so maybe it will.
Most we have a second.
Is there discussion on any more discussion on the motion?
I just said that. Hearing none? All my favor? Aye? Nays?
Nay.
Ayes, ahsa.
At this time, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to approve the tax stabilization agreement as submitted by the applicant with his application, subject to item number three and four, to be amended to include the terms for termination, early termination, as well as to include language if the termination does occur within the first three years, the general ordinance clawback language shall apply.
Any discussion?
Vice President Bulvis, are you, for clarifying purposes, the number four termination, is that the term? Are you saying it's to be determined or specific?
I'm saying the language that our solicitor suggested in his edits for section three and four shall be incorporated and amended as to for the original applicant's agreement.
That was added, actually, that language in there was added. Yeah, okay, and that's the language that was discussed at the financial.
Okay.
At risk of, could I maybe just read into the record the changes?
Yes, yes. I can read them, actually.
But there's one that I just wanted to, two that I wanted to call to your attention that, from what you just said, one, section two actually amends the termination date as well in subsection G. And the second is, just to be very clear on what we were proposing, is the termination, if the termination happens within the first three years of the agreement, there's recapture of the amount due in those first three years, right? We're just clear on that, yeah.
Correct.
Not to, not to, no less than. Okay, thank you, Councilwoman.
Okay, the amendments from the original applicant's application agreement are to include in section two, subsection G, termination date shall mean June 30th, 2045, is the new language. Section three, this term of the agreement shall be for a period beginning on the commencement date and terminating on the termination date, notwithstanding the foregoing, Organogenesis and/or DIV may terminate this agreement for convenience at any time prior to the termination date upon written notice to the town, comma, provided, however, that DIV may not elect to terminate this agreement without the express written consent of Organogenesis in the event that as between Organogenesis and DIV, Organogenesis is responsible for the payment of taxes. The remaining of subsection three shall remain the same as the applicant submitted originally. As for section four, the title, "Extension Option," shall be changed to "Termination Option." The language in subsection A will read, notwithstanding any other provisions herein, Organogenesis may elect to terminate this agreement at the expiration of the initial lease term, which is currently May 31st, 2041, as amended, hereafter early termination date, by delivering written notice to the town by the January 1st prior to the early termination date. Subsection B and C are repealed or crossed out. A term shall be added regarding the clawback provision, I'm not sure where. Any suggestions to the solicitor, from the solicitor as to where that language should be added? I have it under obligation, C, six? Okay. Item six, subsection E shall be created to have language, in essence, that if termination does occur within the first three years, the clawback provision, the recapture provision shall be initiated, as written in the general ordinance, for those first three years only, from one to three years. Correct? Not to exceed three years.
Can, this is a, I'm sorry, a technical change to that, can we, can we just say exactly what it is? Because I don't love the recapture of language because it references use and the use isn't defined. So what I prefer to say is that if there's a termination, a default in a termination within the first three years, Organogenesis shall be liable to the town, the amount of the difference between the taxes paid by Organogenesis during those three years and the unassessed value of the property during those, you know, the taxes due on the unassessed, or the, excuse me, the unstabilized value of the property.
That is agreeable, yes, for my motion.
Thank you.
Did you get all that, Lynn? Okay.
God bless you.
What about section nine? There was a change there. Is that change still in effect?
That's the original agreement that I have is.
Yeah, transfer of rights.
Yep, that's, that's fine, correct?
No, we were requesting that that be taken out.
Taking that.
Yeah.
And on section nine, transfer of rights under the agreement, subsection A, consistent with the terms of section 321-22C, the following language, upon council approval, shall be struck and will just continue what this agreement may be assigned by DIV.
And just for the avoidance of doubt, I mean, that language is, to be clear, not in the version attached to the application, it was added subsequently, so.
Okay.
Doesn't need to be stricken, it's just not reflected.
Oh, okay, got it, thank you.
Also?
I think so.
And ten, we're striking in accordance to the sections 321, 22B. Are we striking that?
The original, the original application as submitted.
Doesn't have it in there.
Will remain but for the language I just read into the record, yeah.
I gotta say, doing this verbally, chopping up an entire agreement is ridiculous. It's very difficult to follow, I'm just saying. So Lynn, if you wouldn't mind, I'm gonna put you on the spot because I gotta know what I'm voting on.
I'm sorry, I can't go back and do the exact motion. I have, I have what she has made, but then we're gonna have to read.
That's okay, I understand.
I can repeat my motion, not the actual motion, but I can explain my motion, Councilwoman Tapi, if you want, me too.
Sure, if you don't mind.
So what I'm requesting is that the application that was submit, the original application that was submitted and approved by the Budget and Financial Review Board be adopted today with these, with the following changes. If you refer to the redlined copy of changes that we have from today. We're going to adopt on page three of 11, everything that you see in red on that page.
Okay.
So section G of two.
Yep.
All of three, all of four.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now, turning the page on section six, the obligations, that's the clawback provision that Organogenesis had offered today verbally to us with that three-year construction.
That's what that is, okay.
So that's that part that I'm adding.
Yep.
And then the original agreement on section nine, transfer of rights, that upon council approval language was not in the original agreement.
To get rid of that.
And will not be, it's not stricken, it was just never there, so that was added.
Okay.
Pretend it was never added.
So, okay.
So that language will not be included in this motion. And that's the, that's the remaining, that's the totality of the changes.
And the other red lines on page?
Were not in the original application, or were in the original application.
You're in the, you're in the application that they submitted, it's in your packet.
So those are the only changes that were made from the original application.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Tapi, if you'd be helpful, I have a copy of the application version, if you'd like to.
I guess it's just a matter of, this is not the redlined version we have in front of us, I mean, that's the bottom line, right?
That's correct. All the red lines rejected, other than as Councilwoman Bulvis read into the record.
Perfect, thank you very much.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Any more discussion?
So we basically rejected the changes by the, recommended by the solicitor.
Yes, we, correct, we accepted the changes recommended by the Financial Review Board, but for the amendments I just proposed.
The Financial Review Board?
Right, isn't that who sent this to us? The Budget Board?
They sent us a recommendation. Yeah, the initial application.
So that initial application?
Right, right.
Is what I'm accepting with those changes.
Well, they didn't, they, they didn't recommend the application itself, the language in there.
I'm just telling you which, which version.
Right, okay, yeah, I understand. Okay, I'm gonna be voting no when we vote because this is illegal. The town solicitor has said it's not legal, it's a violation of our ordinance, and that's very simply why I'm voting no.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, hold on, favor? Aye? Nays?
Nay.
Ayes, ahsa. Public comment?
Do we have to vote on B still? Do we already vote on B?
Like, B?
Do we have to vote on B still?
You didn't vote it. You didn't take action on that item.
Correct. We should need to, right?
Okay, item B. Councilwoman Bovis.
You're saying you don't... Don't add this? That's what we just did on the...
What do you want?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve item B? Any discussion?
So what we're adopting is a, what Mr. Hodgkins called a parallel inconsistent ordinance. Is this ordinance inconsistent, or it's inconsistent with our general ordinance on the tax stabilization agreement? I think that creates all kinds of legal problems. I don't think passing any ordinance... Passing any tax stabilization agreement as an ordinance is necessary, because we have our own ordinance. But maybe this is necessary, because we're not following our own ordinance. So, but I just think it's, you know, piling an illegality on top of an illegality.
I just wanna say for the record that I think the word illegality is improper. Just because something is inconsistent, I don't believe it's... Doesn't make it illegal.
Well, an ordinance is a law, and we're either gonna follow the rule of law, or we're not. And we're not following it.
Well, I think we had discussions over there, saying in the next three or four weeks, we'll fix it. What's the big deal? We've got a company here that's gonna spend...
Some of the stuff here, we're not fixing, like Item Nine. Are we? Are we gonna fix that, too? I don't know. I mean, this is creating a legal mess. That's what it's doing, you know? I know this is a great opportunity, the company's coming here, we love the company coming here, but this is kinda crazy, really, what we're doing here. And, you know, there had to be a better way of do this without violating our ordinance, even if we're violating it for three minutes.
Jeremy?
Yeah, I would just say respectfully again that we strongly disagree that you're violating your ordinance. We maintain that you're doing one of two things. You're either amending it pursuant to the requirements of the charter, which we've satisfied all of those, or you're passing specific legislation that modifies general legislation, which, to the council president's point, if you then revisit, and there is a concern about enforceability, which, for what it's worth, you've heard me say, we're very concerned about enforceability a lot tonight, and we're okay from this. We've researched this. We feel pretty comfortable. But if there is that concern, you could always ratify after you've made your amendment. So again, respectfully, I appreciated the conversation, but I do disagree with that statement that it's illegal. And I would just add, to Councilwoman Bovis's point, it's a strong term that has a chilling effect on commerce, so I would just caution that.
Attorney Savage, just for the record, so... Because I'm not gonna be able to repeat what you said earlier, can you just reiterate the language that you cited to earlier on that case about specific and general legislation that's conflicting? Just so I... Because that's my position as well, and I just won't be able to reiterate it as succinct as you did. But I just wanna read that into the record again regarding this agenda item.
Yeah, if I can...
Thank you, I know. That's going back, way back. Sorry to put you on the spot like that.
No, it's okay. It's just one wrong page here somewhere high enough, so... So if I... If you indulge me, I'll give you a few. So Section 43-3-26 of the Rhode Island General Laws, Conflicting General and Special Provisions, reads, "Wherever a general provision shall be in conflict with a special provision relating to the same or to a similar subject, the two provisions shall be construed, if possible, so that effect may be given to both. And in those cases, if effect cannot be given to both, the special provision shall prevail and shall be construed as an exception to the general provision." That's the Rhode Island General Law. We believe that's a restatement of the standard canons of statutory interpretation that courts apply, especially to courts in Rhode Island. So I'll leave it there.
Perfect. That was the language I was looking for. Thank you.
I think the solicitor addressed that earlier. Could you repeat that again?
My only issue with that was, obviously, specific normally governs... It overrules general when it's not repugnant to the general intent or the general ordinance.
I'm just curious, because I did hear that comment, and we had some indirect discussion about it, but not to put you on the spot, Solicitor, go on, but do you feel that the modification we've now made to the agreement, vis a vis the recapture concession, changes your evaluation of the repugnancy of the...
It makes it a little bit more acceptable, however, obviously, the way the ordinance is written right now, the recapture is all or nothing. And I mean, it's something that this council definitely needs to revisit...
Yep.
To clean up the issue down the road over there.
I'm gonna vote no on this, not because I have anything personal against your team or the company. I do welcome the company here, it's just I have a problem with going... With the process in general, which has happened more than once, and it goes against what the solicitor recommends, so that's really the only reason why I'm voting no. But thank you for being here and your time.
Any other comments?
Could I just ask, just because I'm unclear, when this item was opened prior, I know that there was an amended, slightly amended, but which version are we...
The submitted version, but that with Item E being amended to the language of the Smithfield Town Manager acting on behalf of the town.
Is that staying in?
I just... That was what was moved and seconded.
I'm sorry, I'm just still not clear on which...
The language that I believe... Who submitted this?
Those are their amendments.
The language that you submitted is what I...
I just had an issue...
To be approved in full.
I just had an issue with E, the stricken language.
I thought that we just contemplated that in Item A regarding the town managers. Did we just... I thought we just contemplated that. That's why I did it that way.
Yeah, it's gotta come before the council.
I thought that was eliminated.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
If I could just offer an explanation for why we suggested these changes is, sometimes you get to the finish line, you're ready to sign the agreement, and someone says there's a typo in the heading of the agreement. We're trying to capture that type of flexibility, so we don't have to come back for that. That's why we suggested the changes, as we did. Ministerial, non-substantial changes the town manager can make. That's the purpose of the revision to E, in our view. That was our attempt.
By the time we get done with this, Jeremy, your foot will be much better.
I know. It'll be out of the cast. I tell you, it doesn't feel better now. I think I'm gonna need hips replacements by the time we're done with this.
Any other comments? Public comment? We can vote? Yeah, we voted. Oh, okay. Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
We unofficially voted.
We have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Nays?
Nay.
Eyes have it. Motion to adjourn.